That.
I didn't read.
Well.
Stay.
Well.
Go on your north, hard, west side is stable or then.
Uh.
I gotta let people.
Well.
Eighty.
It should be.
It's like a.
The standings.
Um, so.
Yeah.
Helpers.
Uh, sending.
Right now.
Like, that's another one. It's just a matter of.
I think just going to.
Both the lines.
And then we'll.
Well, we're.
Making our.
Yeah.
There's like a.
Can cover it.
And they do go well there.
The route.
They do.
Oh, how do you get the line for?
But it only runs.
It already.
There are two runs. Only runs.
I need to.
One now.
One person.
He was connected with.
Well. At the moment, they had two bridges.
Oh, I think.
So.
How many?
How many?
Have you tried to give into the game yet?
I think.
Sure, I'll be honest, but I think.
Yeah, the answer is what they want.
Hey, you can give.
I think.
Yes, but.
Definitely.
And I didn't have.
Where's the next question?
I was gonna get a hold of Rob, but I didn't have.
Are we good?
Fantastic.
All right.
Hello.
Are we set? We're gonna, we're gonna begin your recording.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Sciop Township Planning Commission. Um, for March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four to order. And it's seven oh one. I need to do the backup recording. All right. Um. Again, Commissioner Walsh, will you call Ross, please?
Call the role of commissioners of the Sciop Township. Planning Commission. They're just very capable.
The website is down.
More.
President.
Culbertson.
Present.
Rodney.
Present.
Walsh, present, Hyde.
Present.
Riser.
Present.
Excellent.
All right. We have forum. Um, I just wanna announce to folks that the Scio website is down, and so there may be some folks that are uh, struggling with the uh, finding the meeting ID to join, but we do have our consultants here. Um, and we are. Can you put up the screens?
Share.
Maybe. Um, and we'll get started. A few, a few technology glitches. Um, so adoption of the agenda. Um, I do wanna point out that we do have a discussion about um, our bylaws that may wanna go after new business if anyone. Wants to.
I would move. Adapt the agenda with the addition of the bylaws discussion. We move to the end of new business.
Is there a support for, okay, supported by Commissioner Apple? Uh, any further discussion on adoption of the agenda? I think the only other correction was that the rezoning is uh, to I two, not I one.
Oh, in that.
In the, yeah. Um, but that, yeah, just so, so people know. All right. Um, all right, all those in favor of adapting the amended agenda? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Moving forward, uh, communications and correspondence. We have none um, in that has been uploaded. Any that any commissioners would like to report? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have no.
What, what did you ask?
I'm sorry. Uh, communications and correspondence. We had none that was um, uh, in the packet, uh, just if any commissioners uh, wanted to report any.
I, I sent my report out late.
Okay. All right. And um, uh, Commissioner Riser also sent out his report. Um, and those will be added to the um, meeting record. Um, all right, we have no presentations, and with that, I will open public comment at seven oh four. People wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda, and that is for the rezoning of the um, Burtzell. Is that, am I pronouncing that correctly?
The Burtzell.
Bursell uh, properties. Um, that will have a separate public hearing for that. Um, oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except a representative or spokesperson of an organization shall have five minutes to address the commission. Uh, is, and we'll start with anyone present uh, for public comment. Please come forward. Right, seeing none, uh, we'll move to online. Is there anyone present who would like to do, participate in public comments? They should raise their hand.
I believe so. Uh, Rob Pattinson, your hand is raised. Um, do you wanna call him?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Rob, you're up.
I think you have to unmute him.
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah.
Rob, is that better?
That's better.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
No, no worries. Uh, first of all, thank you, Commissioner Riser, for uh, fixing the Zoom. I would propose that all committees now need uh, Zoom training again. We went through Zoom training uh, for the pandemic. And now um, some people have moved on, and so I think all of our committees now are, are light on Zoom training. So I would propose that uh, the entire township committees uh, need Zoom training. And Jen, thank you for the email about uh, the transit funding. Um, and is uh, is that gonna be a subject for a future Planning Commission meeting for a subcommittee on transit?
Uh, only if uh, the recommendations approved by the Board of Trustees.
Ah, gotcha. Okay. Thank you very much, all. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't think so. Yeah, Ms. Bren, I don't see your hand up. So, I don't think so, again.
All right. All right, then, um, I'll uh, close public comment at uh, seven oh seven. Um. We need. All right.
Does that require? A motion?
One of them.
Only reason I ask is because that's how we've been doing.
Ben, so I'll, I'll take a motion.
I'm moving close.
Okay, is there support, support by Commissioner Hyde? Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, public comment is closed at seven oh seven. Moving on, we do have a public hearing this evening. Um, and it is uh, I will declare the public hearing for O A number twenty four zero zero two, the Bursell Properties rezoning IRP to I two. Um, and uh, the rules of procedure are the applicant will uh, come forward and provide uh, an overview of the project. And uh, then we'll uh, move to our um, planning. Uh, our planner and our engineer, uh, if they would like to uh, weigh in, and uh, questions of uh, fact from the Planning Commission. And then um, we will uh, open it up to the public, uh, and the same rules apply as for uh, public comment, three minutes for an individual, five minutes for an organization. Okay, with that, I'll invite the uh, applicant to come forward, and please sign in. We do have the sign-in sheets up here. Welcome.
Look.
And we do have our planner and O H M on, right?
We have, yes.
Okay, great.
Doug are both on.
Right. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thanks.
I'm Charlie Khan with Swisher Commercial, um, representing both the seller and the buyer in the transaction, and I've done business with the Bursells. Uh, sold them their current location, which is in sixty five fifty Jackson Road that they closed on at the end of twenty fourteen and remodeled and uh, opened up her business in twenty sixteen. Uh, the business has continued to grow. Uh, then um, to a point where they are at capacity in that current location. And I don't know if you got their letter that was in the packet, but it explains their operation and their growth and all of that. And um, as you can see, the nice clean operation that they run at sixty five fifty, this will just be an extension with mostly uh, the repairs and operation for production at this other location, so.
Joe.
Um, I'm Joe Maynor with Watchon Engineering, uh, civil engineer. Um. Um. Um, so this project will rezone the property from um, that IRB uh, to I two, um, in order to help extend the operation. Um, we proposed this as a conditional rezoning, because we know it doesn't truly meet the master plan. Um, Laura's done a great job with her review, um, explaining, you know, why this type of proposal would meet the master plan in, in the intent that it is research industrial properties. Um, so we've gone through, we've proposed basically six conditions, literally eight conditions on the rezoning. Um, Laura has noted some of those, you know, we took them straight out of the code book just to show that we're trying to comply with specifically uh, major vehicle repair. Um, so we're here to basically answer any questions regarding that. Um, may have.
Joe, I have one question.
Sure.
Can I order just, can you scoot slightly to your right? I'm unable to uh.
Pan the camera.
Do you hear me now? Yeah, talk, talk, set it down.
Yeah, the camera.
See you now, Joe.
Oh, on the camera, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
So I don't know if you want me to walk through all the conditions or whether you've read those um,
really.
Save some time.
Yeah, we could, and Laura will go over them in her review as well.
Perfect, yeah. Laura does a great job.
I hope we have Doug or Laura.
We have both. Um, no, I'm sorry, we have Doug.
Okay.
And Stacy, if they want to.
Yeah, okay, then.
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, a, a question.
So. Is Bursell Properties the one that's gonna have the vehicle facility?
Bursell Properties is the property owner. Their business is heritage collision, so they have the LLC as their ownership entity, and then their business is the operating business entity.
And that's connected to the.
Heritage collision on Jackson. Yep, so this will be an extension of that same operation, so the traffic won't actually be coming out on Jackson Road. They've got a easement to connect through to Stabler from their property, so they can go back and forth from this lo, the location we're asking for to their current location.
So, as I understand, the heritage collision, they do bodywork.
Yes.
Okay, and will this other facility do bodywork?
Yes.
In addition to mechanic?
It's, it's, it's all strictly allegory answer.
This is collision. I'm gonna move the collision over there.
So all the, all the employees basically will be at the main location, still drop off, and most of the production of the bodywork and framing, everything like that will take place in the larger facility.
So a customer would go to the original facility to get an estimate or whatever.
Yeah, for drop off.
And pick up.
Okay. And the current facility has three bays?
Excuse me, how many bays?
Your current facility has three bays or?
No, I guess.
A bay?
Fifteen, I believe.
Fifteen bays?
Overhead doors, though, are, how many overhead doors? Four?
No, it's kind of eight now.
On one side, just on one side?
Five in front, five, four in the back, one, two on the sides.
Well, that's great.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, when we first bought it, it was great, but we outgrew it. I thought it was big enough, but it's not nearly big enough.
Yeah, all right, any other um, just questions of fact of the applicant? All right, and we'll move to either Doug or Laura, and um, I would request, if they could, to put up the aerial. And it would be good to, if you can, if you can do that, Doug, and it'd be, I, I wanna, you know, here's our existing facility. This is how we're planning to, you know, connect and so forth. I think that would be helpful for.
Sure.
The commissioners to.
I can do that. Let me see. Let me, give me a second.
Okay. Hi, Doug. Good to see you.
How you guys doing? How you guys doing?
How you doing, Doug?
Good, good. Um, okay, I'm gonna share my screen here, and I'm gonna zoom in on this property. Can you guys all see that?
So, yeah.
Let's see, where are we?
Oh.
Right here.
Why?
Okay. So.
Yeah, can you switch your layer to the aerial? Okay, great. Perfecto.
So. So just so you can see what's going on here, um, this is the existing collision uh, facility. They have access off of Jackson. And then they have this little access easement. It's actually not an easement, it's actually, it's part of their property that, that.
It's an easement involved, not.
Yeah. Um, they have this, okay, they have this easement that goes um, across the property to Stabler. So if I understand it, and Mr. Burs, Bursell can correct me if I'm wrong, I understand it, people will stop here, drop their cars off, and the intention is to drive this um, uh, drive this easement to Stabler Road, and then head north up Stabler to the facility, which is uh, you know, pro, proposed facility, which is right here. So.
Yeah, so here's another easement. It, in the back of the parking lot.
Uh huh.
All the way back to the right corner, here's a twenty foot easement. Keep on going back, right there. It cuts through.
Oh, okay.
That's another easement.
All right, well, then there's two ways uh, to get there that.
Yeah, the one up front. One up front, that's what men in the move and grants use for cutting through.
Okay.
We still, we still have access and use it, but most of the, the use is by men on the move and grants.
Okay, um, so the, the point is that they weren't planning on driving their vehicles out onto Jackson to get back to this facility.
Correct.
So they could stay onsite, either use this access or easement here, and then drive their, drive the vehicles or maybe not drive them, but trailer them or whatever uh, to get back to this facility up here, and this is where the production would occur, this is where the employees would be, so uh, I, I, I believe your application uh, material said no, no uh, customers would be going back to the site. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So that is the um, is that helpful, uh, Jen?
Yeah, that.
Okay.
That helps explain it a lot. All right.
Okay.
I did wanna see what that is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then grants is a separate parcel and the fencing and all of that.
Yeah.
Is not your property.
Correct.
All right.
That's.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Um, and, and Doug, if you would also uh, kinda go over the zoning that's around it as well as the existing zoning, I think that would be helpful for everyone.
Okay. Um, let me go to a report. Cause this shows a few things. I think this shows the zoning, master plan. Uh, it doesn't show the zoning. Let me go back. Should have pulled that up and started with. Um, then give me two seconds here, and I can pull this up.
We're just, you know, really making you work tonight.
Testing my, my, my skills, which aren't very much.
Website's back up.
Works, we got an external network. I'm on my.
Yeah. Got you.
Okay, so here we are. Um, let me zoom in a little bit more so you guys can see it better. That's as far as I guess it'll let me zoom. Okay, so uh, here's the property in question. Um, I don't know if you can see my cursor moving around, but um, it's in this area zoned IRP. And then to the south of that is zoned I one, that's the designation's over here, but this whole area is owned I one. Um, where the Bursells have their property uh, currently is zoned I two, uh, is this whole area off of um, Stabler. And um, and then right on uh, Jackson Road is zoned um, I believe that's also I one, right in the frontage. So there's quite a variety of zonings going on here um, i- in and around this property. But a big chunk of the, you know, obviously this I two is what the zoning would require for a, for a uh, commercial facility. And um, uh, you know, that's, that's across, across Stabler Road, but then they got I two, IRP, I one. There, there, there's just a wide variety of stuff going on here. Most of it's pretty industrial, and it's all industrial except for the, right near Jackson Road. So that's the current zoning. Um, of, of the facility, of, you know, the area. And if you'd like, I could be, give you some brief comments on our report.
Yeah, and, oh, it would be good then to go the master plan zoning in your report, just to.
Yeah.
Also tie that together. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so I'm going to, um, I'm gonna stop this. Because you guys all have my report. And I'm sure you wanna look at my face anyway. Um. Okay, so, uh, this is our, our, I'm not gonna go through this point by point, because I assume you guys have had a chance to look at it, but this is our March fourteenth uh, review. Um, and as Daphne mentioned, they're requesting a conditional rezoning from IRP to I two. The kind of interesting thing about a conditional rezoning is that the conditions have to be um, brought up and, and uh, posed by the applicant. This is, this is different than a P U D or a conditional use. Not, you know, conditional rezoning can't be confused with conditional use, although they sound the same. Uh, conditional rezoning is a, is a rezoning where the applicant is actually proposing some specific conditions that, that in effect might make a rezoning that might not be acceptable to a community more acceptable. And um, uh, in the way the law is written, it's like basically what the applicant is proposing is all we can really act on. We can't, you know, as a, as a planning commission or even myself as a planning consultant, we can't say, well, what if you do this, or what if you do that? We might approve the rezoning. It's pretty much we are, we're kinda bound by what they are proposing to us. Um, and so they're proposing a conditional rezoning with, I, I, I think um, was mentioned eight or so conditions. I think we've sort of reduced that down to about three conditions that um, that are kind of above and beyond what the ordinance would otherwise uh, require. Um, and those conditions are um, one, that they are going to do only a major vehicle repair facility and vehicle collision repair facility, and those are the, that's the verbiage out of the zoning ordinance. Um, so that would, that's the use. There's no other, there's no question, there's no, you know, concern about what other uses are permitted in I two, because I two allows a few things that we might not want. It's a, it's a, it's getting to be one of our more heavier industrial districts. And it allows some out, outside storage and some other things that might not be acceptable in that part of the township. But uh, they, you know, the applicant has indicated they don't wanna do any of those other things that are allowed in the I two zone. And they, they're, they're only interested in doing a vehicle repair facility. So what that means is that um, if somebody else ever wants to, if, if this rezoning was approved as proposed, that's the only thing that could ever occur here. So if somebody, if uh, um, you know, Swisher or some company uh, came in and wanted to sell this, or the Bursells wanted to sell this to someone else, um, they would have to essentially rezone the property again to something else, unless it was another, you know, collision repair facility. That, that could, of course, you know, continue on uh, in, in, in that manner. Um, the other thing that they are proposing to do, which is a little different than uh, or I should say, above and beyond what we normally would allow or, 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 you know, permit if there was a straight rezoning, is they indicate that they're, they will not be adding any impervious surface to the site. And that's a, a relatively, you know, relatively short sentence, you know, thing to say, but it has pretty big um, consequences in that there's, if you, if you looked at the site in our report, there's some wetlands on the site, and there's some woodlands on the site. And by them saying that they would not be adding impervious surface, and if that becomes a condition of approval of this uh, rezoning, then they would not, under the, under their own conditions that they have proposed, township did not impose this on them, they are voluntarily imposing these, this condition on themselves. That means they could not add uh, parking, they couldn't add building surface, they couldn't do anything that would create more impervious surface on the site, which would in, then uh, would protect the existing wetland onsite, protect all the existing trees onsite. So that condition, while it's a small, you know, just a small sentence, it does, it does a lot for the site in that you would be pretty much assured that um, what's on the site now would, would remain on the site as far as natural features. Um, the other condition uh, that is of note uh, that they are proposing is that the subject site will be, will uh, only host employees, and that they're limiting access to the rezoning to employees. So that would help uh, offset uh, concerns about uh, additional, you know, uh, customers going there and, and things like that. That would be, you know, coming off of Jackson or what have you. And so that would uh, help to address any kind of negative traffic uh, issues that, that might occur there um, with either uh, you know, employees or vehicles going back and forth between the two. Um, and I think those are the real, the, then, like I said, they mentioned about eight of them, but as you saw in our report, I won't go over them again. Uh, they, most of those things are required by zoning anyway, so they're not, they're not really legitimate. I don't mean that in a bad way, Joe, but they're not necessarily legitimate conditions that we could use in a conditional rezoning. You know, basically saying you're gonna meet the ordinance. You have to meet the ordinance anyway, you know, that's not a condition that, that, you know, we would accept as a condition for a conditional rezoning. Um, so uh, so that's the, you know, that's really the, the big, the, the, the the uh, long and short of it, there's, aside from the zoning, we do mention in our report, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you might have about the report. But we do mention in the, with regard to the master plan, that's another uh, you know, of course, a big part of any rezoning as we look at the master plan and how, what, what the future land use says, and we try to follow that as much as possible um, for rezoning requests. And in this particular case, the uh, um, and I will share my screen here if I could. Let's see, how do I do that? Um, you know, that back. Let me share my screen again. Okay. I trust you can see this. So this is the master plan uh, future land use map of the township. And this little area here with the box around it is the, the new site of the, the, their area that they're requesting um, zoning for, uh, the I two zoning. As you see, that's, that's red, and, and what, what the master plan designation that we'd be looking for, if, if it was just a slam dunk rezoning, would be this kind of purple over here, because that's general industrial, and general industrial, that master plan designation coincides with the I two zoning district. This, this uh, mixed-use commercial uh, mixed-use commercial designation coincides more with the C two, which is our general commercial districts. That's more like retail and restaurants and things like that. So there was some desire when the master plan was developed that this part of the uh, of the township, pretty much from Zeeb up to this part of Stabler, a big chunk of it could develop in kind of a retail commercial sort of way. But what's happened and what's actually happened in, in out in the field here is that this property just south of the Burcells property is where the Quanis resale shop and warehouse, and I think they have some other, actually Charlie from Swisher knows well what's going on there, so I think he's represented them before. But they have, um, uh, there's a number of uses going on here that, you know, that aren't retail, okay, and they're not. They don't conform to the mixed-use commercial, they're more warehouse type uses. And so the point that we made in our report is that it's, we think it's unlikely that even though this little piece here, this little, I call it a finger in the report, even though this little finger of land uh, is planned for commercial or, you know, commercial retail uses, it's unlikely that, you know, this would someone would come to Sio Township and request this to be C two and then try to start a restaurant or a retail business or something like that, when you'd have to drive, you know, take a you know, go north on Stabler, go past the Quanis warehouse, go past the, you know, a- all these auto-related uses on the uh, west side of Stabler. And then start up something that you would expect a retail customer to show up to and be successful for. So we, we look, we then kind of look beyond the future land use map and then looked at uh, the, what the text of the master plan talks about. And as you can see from our report, the text of the master plan uh, talks about, uh, this area, this mixed-use commercial and generally this area around here is encouraging industrial and medium to, in some cases, somewhat heavy industrial type uses um, within this area. So if you, if you look beyond the the future land use map and look at some of the text of the master plan, we, we believe that, uh, what the applicant is proposing uh, certainly is consistent with the text of the master plan. And, uh, again, we, we don't, we, we, we're not as bothered with this little jutting up into the site as retail and commercial, because I don't honestly thinking of as a practical matter that that would ever actually happen. So, and the other part is the history of the site has been used as industrial warehouse since the eighties. I think I look back on some aerial photographs in this building. Earliest I can find this showing up in aerial records is nineteen eighty-eight. So this building has been used as an industrial kind of warehouse manor since nineteen eighty-eight. So again, the likelihood of that changing to something in a commercial retail you know, kind of building or facility is kind of remote in our, in our, in our opinion. So we believe the text of the master plan would support this, even though the future land use map does not. So that's probably, you know, a really big part of our analysis was the master plan. Um, we think the zone, there's a lot, as I mentioned, there's a lot of stuff going on with the zoning. The development potential, again, we don't have to necessarily worry about the development potential because we know exactly what it's going to be. It can only be a collision shop. If it's something else, we, that something else would have to come back in front of the planning commission. And I think some of the other issues, traffic, I talked about this, uh, you know, kind of blunting any traffic concerns due to the use of, use of the easements out to the site. So as you can see in our recommendation, we are recommending approval of the conditional rezoning from IRP Industrial Research Park to I two General Industrial. We provided, uh, fourteen findings of fact in our, uh, can, our recommendation of approval. Uh, the planning commission certainly could, if you would like, use all or some of these findings of fact um, in your motion, if you were so inclined to recommend approval of this rezoning. And I would be very happy to answer any questions that I can about this request or about our, about our analysis.
So I want to go back to the master plan. We definitely try to line up with the master plan, and I just want to say that as a commissioner, as a commission. But as I understand, pardon me for being a little dense here, but this gray area on the map is public semi-public. Is that, that, that's north of the, um, particulars property. Is that correct?
Yeah, the town, the township owns, uh, township owns that property.
Oh, the township owns the gray.
Correct.
Okay, but in terms of the master plan, gray, if, if I'm reading these little squares, this list of uses, it's public semi-public. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
And, and what is public semi-public? I think you referred to it as you retail?
No, no, that's the little, the little red. What their property is, is mixed use. So public semi-public is like a governmental uses. Uh, the history of that particular site is, uh, some years ago, the township explored the idea of constructing their own sewage treatment plant. And that, that was going to be the location of a sewage treatment plant. You know, that was ten plus years ago. I, I'm I don't think anyone has talked about that in over ten years, maybe twelve years, but that was the idea, that's why the property was purchased. There was some preliminary plans showing a sewage treatment plan on that property. And, um, that uh, has not been discussed in many years.
Okay, and the other thing is you, you, I think you kind of explained that you thought that there wouldn't be you, you were in agreement with this petition because carving out this section for the new heritage collision would not prevent mixed use of that property in the future, but you don't think that it's more, more commercial warehouse back there? In any event, is that kind of what you were saying?
Yeah, I didn't.
I say, I'm asking you that, I'm not trying to set you up for anything, I'm asking you that because that's not true along, I mean, this is kind of a dead end here. But for instance, we have all kinds of things going on in that Jackson Plaza. Sort of curved road, there's all kinds of stuff going back there, a golf, uh, club, there's a a brewery now, so I don't know if we can assume what future projects, especially as Sio gets more and more, less and less land available for commercial use. So I'm just wondering why you why you're focusing on that in your presentation is like, that's, that's the meat of your approval decision or that's the?
Um, no, if you read my report, that's not the meat of my approval, this is my approval recommendation, that's, that's one factor. And it's just my experience as a planner looking at this piece of property and what's around it, and it's very unlikely that something of a retail nature is going to locate there. That's completely surrounded by commercial or completely surrounded by currently industrial uses and some relatively heavy industrial uses. So that, I mean, that's, I don't know what else to say, but that's, that's, that's where, that's where that part of our recommendation. I mean, there, we have fifteen findings of fact. Or I think it's fifteen. Most of them support, most of them support, you know, this, so that's just one. That's not the meat of my recommendation, that's one part of my recommendation.
I apologize, I, I meant to say, this is, I mean, the, the, obviously uh, Chairwoman Culverston thought this was very important for you to highlight, so about the evaluation of how this particular project lines up with our master plan. So, I mean, it seemed like some of your rationale for it is that this is gonna be, this area back here is not conducive to retail or restaurants or that kind.
Yes. Yeah, that, that's part of it. And the other part is the text of the master plan talks about uh, mixed-use industrial type uses back there. So I think aside from the future land use map, if, and we have to look at both, we can't just always look at the map. There's the map and the text. If the master plan was just the map, alls we'd have is a map. But there's, there's map and there's text. And, and in this particular case, I think the text would support this rezoning. While the map doesn't.
Yeah, I just want to remind folks that, um, this is the public hearing portion and we do have then, um, our our discussion and so forth on the business. So, no, I, but these are really good, important questions that are important. I'm, I just want to remind people of that, so, yes, go ahead.
Doug, just a quick question here, you know, sort of what you just touched on, and I'll maybe take it to a different level. Since this is surrounded by more heavy industrial uses, it is, you know, on the map of mix of uses in the immediate area. Is there a reason why, you know, especially I guess it being devil's advocate, is there a reason why it's conditional rezoning to I two and not a straight rezoning?
Sometimes, sometimes developers and developers there in front of you can ask them, but many times developers will request a conditional rezoning when there when there are some factors that don't exactly line up with their request. And in this particular case, because the future land use map doesn't exactly line up with their request, they're proposing a few things that they're trying to make, you know, developers and, and the reason this is in the, you know, the, the, why we're allowed to do it, or it's in, it's in enabling legislation and now in our zoning ordinance is for this kind of situation where maybe everything doesn't exactly line up properly, but if the applicant can propose a few things, might make the request a little more palable to the community. And, uh, that's, that's generally why people will, will request a conditional reason.
Commissioner Walsh.
Just a quick question, uh, looking at the future land use. What would we consider the current heritage collision to be? The future says it's blue, which is mixed-use office industrial. We're saying that the expansion in the red would probably be industrial, so would the current facility be considered purple and industrial?
Yes.
And I guess, given the case, I guess I'll ask a question, I don't the future land, what time in the future are we looking? Because the applicant's looking to expand, seems to me that they're probably planning to stay a while.
Yeah, I mean, the master plan looks out.
Yeah, sorry, Jen. I, I, I would just say, you know, future land use is supposed to be ten to twenty years down the road. And, um, uh, you know, we do try to, we review it every five years, and if there are things that don't make sense, we try to fix those. In this particular case, I suppose last time we reviewed the master plan, that kind of purple color could have crept south towards Jackson. To make, you know, to make the Burcells property more conforming with the master plan designation, but um, but maybe that's something we can look at next time we review the master plan.
I'm gonna make sure I understood what Commissioner Walsh says. Are you saying that, that the conditions that for the new site will be applied to the existing site?
No, what I'm saying is the current facility, if you put it into the future, wouldn't be blue, it would be industrial, it would be purple. And if they're looking to expand, odds are they're going to be here for a while, so as, so Juan mentioned, that may be something that gets changed the next time we look at the master plan.
And, um, Doug, where is the, um, Jackson Road overlay district? Where does that stop? Is that a part? How does that, because we can't access the township website uh, tonight, so I was gonna put that up.
Oh, I can, I can, I can put that up, let me share that. So again. No, I got, I got it. So, um, so this, if you can see, this is as close as I can zoom in on the zoning map, but the, can you see that little, that little like dotted pattern? Yeah, that dotted pattern is technically, that's the Jackson Road overlay district. And so, so that sits on top of yeah, that sits on top of office. Yep.
So that whole site and all around it is included in the overlay district.
Oh, okay, that's good.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you for pulling that up. Commissioner Hyde.
Uh, Doug, I have one. I, I guess it's an extraneous question, but if, if I'm hearing this right, and the applicant is not going to be changing the, the building exterior, the parking lots, uh, they're only going to be, the, the interior work for them. Then, uh, if at some point in time they decide they don't need this facility anymore and somebody else wanted it to go back to C two, there would be nothing that would preclude it from being that way because they haven't changed the uh, the nature of the property itself. So it wouldn't this change to I two would not preclude going back in the future.
No, and, and it's, it's currently IRP, so it's not C two. Yep, but it, but no, it, it could, it could go back. And in fact, with the conditional rezoning, let's say the, the Burcells did not want to pursue this. They, the, there's provisions in the conditional rezoning part of the zoning ordinance that talk about a reversion back to the original district. So, let's say, for example, this got rezoned tonight and then they just decided not to do it. Well, there, there's a reversion that, that, the, the, the anticipation is that this property would get rezoned back to IRP if, if they didn't follow the conditions or couldn't do the conditions or couldn't finish this the way they thought they were going to. But to your broader question, yeah, there's nothing that would stop somebody ten years from now or fifteen years from now to pursue either, you know, go back to IRP or pursue what the master plan calls for it to be. And if someone really, really wanted to pursue this as C two, uh, in theory, they could do that.
So Doug, I have a question, riser, uh, with respect to impact on the neighbors or the, you know, the use of the property. How is this use? And maybe this is a question I could ask the applicant. Is there likely to be more noise? More pollution, more parking, is, are the neighbors likely to notice this October, or they're gonna be like, oh, that's just the business that was fixing cars across the street, now they're fixing them down the street? Is that essentially gonna be it?
Yeah, if I could, I'm sure Mr. Burcell would like to provide input on this as well, but so I've, you know, worked with the Burcells for many years on their site and pretty much every step of the way, when they first came to the township with their signed applications and variances they needed and you know, this facility and going through site planning, you know, review initially and actually initially trying to determine if this was a non-conforming, you know, because the, because zoning doesn't support what they want to do necessarily. Um, they had to, we had to make some kind of interpretation and whether this, this could even happen here. So I've been working with these folks for, for many years. And, um, you know, I'll just say this business heritage collision as a business has been, you know, very clean, very good operation within the community, never had a problem with any kind of complaints from any neighbors. In fact, it's kind of the inverse, the, I think some of the neighbors have maybe not been such terrific neighbors to the Burcells over the years. But, um, uh, this, they, they run a very clean operation. And even on top of that, because you never know, they could sell the business to someone else. But, um, there are standards in the zoning ordinance that were mentioned by Joe Maynard as conditions that are actually standards that limit like what you can do outdoors and how many cars you can store outdoors for a twenty-four hour period. So I think like the days of old-fashioned collision shops where they're storing parts and fenders and stuff outdoors, that just wouldn't work with the way our ordinance is currently written. I know that's, you know, there's always concern because collision shops are one of those uses that could, you know, it does have the potential of causing uh, issues, and I've seen it in other communities. But, um, Sio's ordinance is relatively tight in that regard. And when it comes to heritage collision specifically, um, I think they've been a very good township business and, uh, I think good neighbors to folks out there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Doug?
Two hours of operation, I'm looking, is that on your, I'm looking at page seven and your fourteen, your fourteen, uh, commandments. And did you propose anything for hours? And did you propose anything for hours of operation?
The letter that we provided that, uh, is, is this letter here, Sir Commissioner? Uh, hours of operation are eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday.
So is that something we should put it on there, Doug, that would run with the land, the hours of operation?
Yes, that, that would be a legitimate condition, yes.
All right, yeah. Um, okay, I, does O H M have anything they wanna?
No, we didn't review this, um, proposal, so I don't have any comments at this time.
Thank you. Then we'll open up the public hearing to anyone that's, uh, in the audience. Does anyone, uh, present? In the meeting hall, does any woman present want to, uh, comment on this?
Can I ask one question of O H M?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we're gonna get back to it under new business too.
Basically, I'm gonna ask you about water usage and REUs, uh, going from. The, the old place to the old place plus the new place and potential impact on our, our EU. That's my question. When is my turn in a few more minutes on the mic?
So she can look it up. Okay, uh, is there anyone online that would like to comment?
Uh, with respect to the public.
Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. No hands? Then I will entertain a motion. Uh, supported by Commissioner Arizer, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed at seven fifty-two. Okay. Um, and then with that, well, um, we are, we postponed, uh, the bylaws until after, um. Firestone, and so we'll move into, uh, possible action. So if there are other. So was it Stacy that was on or? Yeah, did you have a comment on the REUs and then?
Um, generally, when there's the existing site and they're not changing. Um, anything in terms of utilities, the REUs will follow with the new owners. I didn't quite have enough time to look up what I was going to, so bear with me on that, but. I would have to dig up, um, we have like a master spreadsheet of. Like allocated REUs, sometimes that doesn't show what I'm looking for and I have to follow up with the township and see if they have record of it. So I'm not sure I'll be able to give you that answer tonight, um, that. Either way, this is gonna be a really. Low water and sewage usage, um, I'm not concerned at all about the REUs that would be coming from this type of use. That's certainly something you could consider. Including, I guess, I'm not quite sure, um. What gets included in these types of reviews and what doesn't, since we're not involved in them. But I could. Go ahead.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so either, but they're gonna, they're gonna have operations at the old spot, is that correct? And operations at the new, new spot. So I think there'll be more usage, but it might not be that much more usage. Because I don't know that a collision shop is, you know, is using a whole lot of water. Uh, maybe when they wash the car before they send it out, but I don't know. Uh, you know, one of these gentlemen, I think, has his hand up and has some, maybe some sense of that.
So, the current building has been there since eighty-eight and that building is. Has been a machine shop and, uh. Basically, I think there's a tenant in there right now, which is landscape and maintenance company with, uh, twenty employees in and out of the location. Uh, so, the building itself. Uh, needs updating, it's gonna get a new roof, it's gonna get all new painting and, and exterior, uh, cleaning up and things of that. And landscaping and, and all of that nature, just kind of like their current operation. But as, as far as, you know, five to seven employees in that building. Compared to what's being used in there now, I don't think there's gonna be more or less. Uh, from a building standpoint to a different building standpoint. Uh, their current location is gonna continue on the same usage that it is currently occupying and using. And, um, just wanted to bring to the iteration, it's very hard to find a large. High bay industrial building in this township. And this one is one that fits that type of need and use, and it's gonna be a much cleaner use than what has been there for the last. Since its existence. So those are all positives that I just wanted to press upon you that I didn't mention in the, uh, public hearing comment.
Oh, and I do pay the bills there and the water bill is minimal. Alright, thank you. Alright, then, um. Uh, we'll move to, uh, planning commission discussion.
After we take our action, it's a recommendation to the trustees and they will then hear it also.
Okay, correct. It's a recommendation.
How's the zoning at the current site? Is it, is it I one?
IRP, which is the, uh, industrial research park. It's the current.
And is that more restrictive than I two? Why is it that they can't go to IRP and service you?
It's not, uh, you can ask Doug, but it's not permitted, that type of work in IRP is not. Well, they, well, they, they're purchasing this property.
The current facility is.
Is an I two.
Is an I two.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, across.
So why can't they do what they want to do in an IRP, I think was the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's, uh, it's not a listed permitted or conditional use in the IRP district. The, the IRP district was kind of set up. To develop, um, industrial research parks that. That sort of, uh, were campus-like, like a campus-like industrial research office kind of setting. Um, and. You know, in, in part because the township owns that big chunk back there and in part because that chunk was looked at. As a sewage treatment plan at one point and in theory could be one in the future, depending on, you know, what happens with, with our sewage need. Um, you know, the, I, that, again, and, you know, Kim pointed out that. I, you know, maybe not a good. You know, soothsayer looking into the future, but. Um, the likelihood that this IRP is, you know, would become a research campus park. Um, might not be that likely. But it is, that's what it's zoned for and the, 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 the simple question is, it's just. You know, uh, collision shops and major automobile repair are not listed as either permitted or a conditional use in that district.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
How, how many acres is that? Whole gray area?
Oh, that, um, that the township owns. A good chunk of it is wetland, um, but there is a, a relatively good sized chunk that is. Can you look that up on the?
The wetlands are more on the east of its side, so. I was involved in the sale to the tri- to the township, because the current owners that own this building, the family owned all of that acreage. That was sold to the township, it was a Smith family. And, um. They, uh, had owned all of that property and there's about thirty, thirty-two acres that I think the township bought from it, retaining this five here. And about, uh, probably eighty percent of that is upland.
So it's, it's the largest piece of property that the township owns, basically.
Right, thirty-two point five, thirty-two point four nine.
Yeah, Commissioner, yeah.
And just to give additional context, I don't know if everybody saw this. This property has an eighty foot wide underground gas easement that runs diagonally through the corner of it. The amount of things you can feasibly build on the property to meet setbacks and all sorts of other things is very, very.
Other than particularly with metal, so, um, sanding and such, what are your, um, what's your output, Jim? Trash or wastewater?
How clean your operation is and how it's all water.
Our paint, the paint that we use is a waterborne. It's like, you know, the paint you put on your walls at home? It's a latex paint. The lacquers and the enamels are a thing of the past, ours is all waterborne. And they're coming out with the waterborne, they're next. So. Our paints environment was friendly. I've been spraying it, or we've been spraying it for probably eighteen years now.
I just have a comment, I'm really happy that heritage inclusion is doing really well, like really glad about.
That's a growing community, you see what's going down the street. At Baker, those people are gonna need their car service too.
I'm really, really glad that, uh, things are going well. Sounds like this property that you, you bought with Gary Bux. Um, sounds like it's a good setup with the easement stuff.
They work out good at easement back there.
Yeah, um, I just want to say, I, um, your neighbors are a mess.
Oh, they're. I know.
It, it's, it's, it.
The neighbors, I got two of them.
Yeah.
Man up, up front and the one next to me.
Um, I, I guess I just, I just want to lay out a couple of, of things. One is, uh, we are looking at, uh. We have a, a group that's gonna start meeting on the Jackson Road overlay district. Um, and looking at what we wanted, what the township as a whole wants to, um, kind of. Looking at that zoning district. Um, it is kind of clear that the intent of the master plan is, um. Uh, to have the frontage along, um, Jackson Road, um, not include I two. Um, and, um, so certainly, um, I think you've done a, a great job with. With your business, um, that, I don't know if anybody else went by, but the, the, there's a lot of mess, um. Adjacent to it. And like the Kiwanis also has their, you know, their truck bays are right off Stabler Road, so it is. Um, yeah, so I guess I feel a little bit mixed, but, um, knowing that it is a conditional rezoning. There is limited, um, things that can be done with it. Um, it is going, yeah, I think it is, knowing that your current property, you know, based on the master plan is kind of in transition. Um, but, um, it's. Uh, it, it's hard to imagine that in ten years, something would. Radically change in that, in that specific area, so. That, that's kind of how I.
A little transit.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, um, so tho- those are, that's sort of what I'm weighing and I have to say that. Um, I guess the, the way that you've maintained your existing business and so forth, um, is, is what makes it positive in my mind.
Like a sore thromb is so neat and nice back there. I've even gone to your establishment and got a quote compared to you.
Um, other thoughts from commissioners?
Sorry, what?
No, no. Replanting, no.
I'm looking for a mountain moxie and I don't see one and the website's down, I'm willing to pop for something unless somebody else is, uh. Chomping at the bit to do it, would you collaborate?
Yes. Yeah.
So, I guess.
Okay.
I, I guess. Uh, are there other comments? I, I don't want to jump the gun.
No, I think we're.
And, and I guess I would move that based on the, uh, finding of facts. Uh, contained in this record tonight as well as in the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Report by Carlisle Wartman. That the SIO Township Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Trustees. That ordinance amendment twenty-four zero zero two by Burcell Properties LLC, that's B E R C Z E L. Properties LLC regarding parcel H dash zero eight dash twenty-one. Dash two hundred dash zero two seven be allowed to be rezoned from IRP to I two. Conditionally upon, and I refer you folks to page three, uh, number one. That the rezoning be limited to only major vehicle repair facilities and vehicle collision repair facilities. And two, that no impervious surface be added to the site. Three, that the site will be only used by employees. And four, that the hours of operation shall be from eight AM till seven PM. Unless a different planning commission member has different times in mind, or if that doesn't mean, if that's not reasonable. So that, that would be my, my notion.
I support that.
Okay, and, uh, support from, actually, oh, thank Commissioner Hyde, you got it first. All right, um, further discussion?
Yes.
The hours, you gave me it earlier, seven?
Then, all right.
Call a question.
Call a question, okay, all those, oh, we'll do a, uh, roll call vote, please.
Hyde?
Yes.
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 Riser?
Yes.
Culberson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Walsh, yes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to site plan twenty-three zero two zero Firestone Complete Auto Care New Building. Great. Uh, the applicant is here, if you'd like to come up and, um.
Hello?
Hello. Welcome back.
Thank you, good to be back. Got new faces too.
All right, do you want to, um, just kind of walk us through your site plan?
Sure, yeah, sure. So, as you know, we were here, uh, a few months back for a special use permit approval, um. The site plan hasn't really changed a whole lot, I think maybe more details. Back and forth with the engineer and with the planning consultant with Laura. And, um, and we've made some clarifications, some changes, but we're still proposing. A six thousand one hundred and sixty square foot building for Firestone, Firestone Complete Auto Care Center. Um, it's an, it's an eight bay building. They're gonna have about seven to ten employees in there. It's a, it's a seven day work, a seven day a week business. They, they do open at seven and they close at seven. Saturdays they open up at eight and they close at six and Sundays is nine to five. Um.
Wow.
It's a, um, it's a, it's, you know, it's, it's light automotive repair, so it's a little different from the other applicant that was here, but we. It, about, oh, sixty percent of the business is tires, the other forty percent is light automotive repair, oil changes are popular. Struts, um, brakes, you know, that kind of stuff. No ma- no engine re- re- uh, work, you know, rebuilds, that kind of stuff. No transmission stuff that's, that's done at different places. Um. Uh, the site has, uh, we have, we're developing right next to Culvers. So access is through the Lowe's driveway and then behind the Culvers, and then we've also negotiated and we have an easement that's been secured. With Gerber, the, the collision repair facility that's to the west, they have a driveway that goes to Jackson, so we would connect into that. Um. So our building has been designed so that the front of the building is oriented towards Jackson. The entrance of the building appears like it's using, you know, that you'd want to turn into that Gerber collision driveway to get in here, but you could certainly enter it from. From the Culvers, uh, property. Um, this is part of a two-unit condominium that was, you know, that was developed back in two thousand and twelve when Culvers constructed and they built. And this has just remained undeveloped ever since. Um. Uh, what else can I say? The, we have a tire and a dumpster enclosure that's designed next to the building. So the dumpster enclosure is right behind the, uh, the tire enclosure is right behind the dumpster enclosure, that's where the used tires will go into. There is a rooftop to it, so they can only stack so many tires in there, so they are not going to be visible. And then there's a recycling company that comes as needed to basically pull those tires out and to. Take them and recycle them. They have contract, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll have a contract with a, with a. A recycling company that'll then, that'll then do that and service the center for them. Um, it'll be an all concrete parking lot. They don't do asphalt, um, so it won't be blacktop. It'll be concrete. It'll be curved. You know, it'll be landscaped to comply with the township's requirements. Um, and I know that, uh, I know that the seller is very excited to obviously, you know, develop this. I think he originally had planned on it being multi-tenant shops, like a bigger, a bigger building, a bigger footprint with more parking. You know, so what we're proposing is a much smaller footprint with less parking, more landscaping. There's a big landscape area between the the tire store and Culvers. So we're, you know, we're, you know, we're planting that. I think if there is some stormwater component to it, but it's open space, basically. Um, so it's good separation between the Culvers business and then the tire store business. And then, um, yeah, and so that's kind of it, the project in in a nutshell. The, the, the building's been designed so that it it complies with the Jackson Road overlay district, so it's very attractive. Um, um, it's a, it's a, it's a conventionally framed building, so it's a steel structure with, um, um, uh, nichia is the external materials that are on the building. It kind of looks like wood siding a little bit, right? And, um, some stone and then, uh, it, you know, it's an attractive looking building. I know Myers across the street has kind of their nice little fronts, and so this has kind of got similar look. All the bay doors face away from Jackson Road, so you know, when you're driving by, you know, you'll recognize the name of the business, but you won't be able to see the business, right? You won't be able to see it operating. Um, all the, all the repairs will be done inside the building, so nothing is done outside the building. And it is one of those operations where you can, you know, you can drop off your car, you know, like this time at night, right? Put the keys in the key drop. Yeah, appointment based tomorrow and they'll do the repair and, um, they'll call you and come pick it up. One of those kind of businesses. Um, they, on a, on a busy day, they'll have thirty two, thirty two appointments. Uh, thus the reason for the need for the parking spaces that we're proposing. Um, they, they, they would like to have thirty. I think we have slightly more than thirty proposed, but there is a little funny space up there by where Culvers is. There are some spaces that they have and we're just kind of continuing it. Culvers uses part of the site, kind of the dirt area, if you've driven by it. I think that that's their employees that are parking there, so those spaces that are up there kind of on the north side of the drive aisle, that's probably gonna be where maybe those park, those cars will be displaced too. So we're just continuing that and then, and then, and that, that, so that that function can happen up there. Um, we think it's an attractive project. Um, we are very excited to get going with the, with the construction of it this year. And I know the engineers and the architects have been hard at work to, you know, to work through the design requirements through your planning, your, your external planning consultant and your engineering consultants. Um, and there are a couple items in the planner's report, and if you wanna go after them now, we can talk about them now. We, we, we'd like to ask for consideration for a couple of things. One is the sidewalk. They're suggesting a sidewalk, this internal sidewalk connection between Culvers and the Firestone. And we're suggesting that you have a great sidewalk there right now along Jackson Road. And the front door for the Firestone is right there by the sidewalk that's on Jackson Road. Why construct another sidewalk behind the buildings, right? When you are in close proximity to the one that's already there. So we're, we're, we, 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 uh, it's they're not, I don't think that they're, they feel very strongly about it. They're probably throwing it to the planning commission to kind of maybe you know, weigh in on this, but we're suggesting that the current sidewalk is is really convenient for customers to, let's say, if they wanna go to Culvers after dropping off their car, they can use that sidewalk that's there. Um, it, there's, I think I read in the planner's report and it's correct, but, you know, you don't cross hardly any drive aisles or driveways where cars are, you know, you gotta, you gotta go down to a driveline with that, that, from what's existing to what we would have to construct if you want to communicate about those. Um, the other item is I know in the planner's report, we're talking, uh, there's a tree mitigation that that's being asked for. And I'll give a little history of it and then Mike can follow up. Mike is with Atwell. He's the engineering consultant. Um, Culvers, when they constructed in two thousand and twelve, they took down some trees on this property. So we provided the township with the tree survey from that time period, which showed those trees that were taken down. We are taking down some additional trees, so the evergreens, so that we can make the connection to the Gerber driveway. And so we're, we're, we're needing to remove some of those so we can make that connection. Those trees and the ones that were taken down in two thousand and twelve are what's being added to require a mitigation of twenty five new trees. And what we're, what we're saying is don't penalize us for what was done in two thousand and twelve, because that was done then with their project. This is, this is its own project. So the trees we're taking down are for our project are we will, we'll handle those and deal with those, but which, which doesn't tr- trigger a mitigation for trees, right? But the, but when you add what was taken down when Culvers developed, this whole area here, then it does.
Why didn't you use their survey?
Because it was convenient.
I appreciate the ad.
Yep, yep. I mean, we could go out and resurvey it, but we, we really wanted to get in front of the planning commission, right? We were going back and forth. It was, it was, it came up in the second round of comments. And we really wanted to get in front of you guys to, to try to move the project forward. Yep.
Did you say about how many trees you're taking out?
Yeah, there's, uh, eighteen trees, I believe. And to Todd's point, um, that would be less than twenty percent of the trees on the proposed property, on the Firestone property, which would not trigger the mitigation. I believe the, the ordinance, um, when you, when you read into it, it does have a, um, a timeline caveat on it that basically caps like five years, right? So if trees were taken down, five years has passed. The way that we interpret it is it kind of resets that timeline, so we should only be looking at what exists now.
So those are really the two items on the, on the write-up, the, 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 from the planner that we're not in sync with, and so we're, and I know they're probably looking for you to, you know, make a final judgment on that, but we'd like to.
Everything else addressed by the planner, you're in sync.
Yeah.
Would that be the, what about trees in the parking area and then the additional parking? Do you wanna talk about those two issues?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you do the tree one, because I'm not exactly up to speed on that. But on the parking spaces, we're asking for more than what the code requires, and so.
How many more? We have a, uh, yeah, we have a maximum.
Yeah, you, you guys have, what, what's the number? Is it, it's, it's much less.
It's not, it's additional nine spaces, I believe, is what we're asking for.
For an additional nine spaces.
Yeah, and to Todd's previous statement, um, kind of between this, the proposed Firestone and Culvers on the north side, there's like a little strip of parking that exists today. And, um, four or five of those spaces are technically on our property. Those are not usable for this business, so we're gonna leave them there because Culvers installed them and likely uses them, but um, you know, those would be like four or five spaces of the, of the nine that were, you know, not really.
Of the nine or thirteen?
I think that we're only nine.
It was nine. In the planner's report, it's nine.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that it's only nine that we're asking for. Yep. Um.
But tho- those won't be used by the business.
Will be used by the business, right? We've got two EV spaces that we've proposed, right? Those are not really spaces that are usable by the business either, but count against the count. Um, and then to Todd's point, I mean, the business for operations purposes wants a minimum of like thirty to thirty-four spaces, which is where we come up with our final number, so asking for consideration of of what's proposed.
You want nine more than the thirty-four?
No. Nope, we want, we would like the thirty-four. That's what's proposed. For the ordinance, max, I believe the max would be twenty-five for the calculation.
What's your average dwell time of a vehicle for like, obviously, between somebody dropping it off or arriving and and moving on and being done with its, do you guys know that from like?
Yeah, so tires are, tires, they probably get you in and out in forty-five minutes to an hour. Oil changes are probably same time, but other repairs take longer, especially if you have to have get apart now, you know, from the, from the local parks, uh, parks. So if you, but you know, what happens is they'll get maybe eight to ten vehicles that'll get dropped off at night, and then they might not get picked up the next day till the end of the day.
Sure.
So then they roll them out when they're fixed and they occupy a parking space. Right, right.
So apologize, I've not seen your site plan, but is your building on the sidewalk? Or is it?
It is.
Backed off and then all your parking is in front?
No, the building is on the sidewalk and the bay doors face the back and all the parking is to the back. Yeah.
Back inside.
Yeah, so, 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 so to your point, putting a sidewalk internal to the Culvers, you have to kind of go back into that parking area, go across a couple driveways, then go over to Culvers. It just didn't, when you could just go out to the front sidewalk, which is relatively short, walk right to the Culvers where their front door is really close to the front sidewalk, and then you could be over there. And not even go pa- really go past the drive.
So, so you're, um, do people enter on the side of your property? Is road on the side or do they interrupt Jackson?
Do you wanna, uh, plan up? Cause Doug could probably.
I'm just looking at this from their memo.
So the customer entrance, there's a door to the building on the west side of the building. But vehicles entering the site could come in from on the west using the Gerber driveway. That'll probably be the.
That's Gerber Road?
Yes.
To the west, okay.
That'll be probably the recognized driveway for this business as well, because of how the business will kind of front towards that corner.
I see, okay.
Or Culvers, you, if you know the, if you've done, if you had stuff done here before, it, you'll know that you can get to it through Culvers. That'd be more of a secondary thing to get to it.
I have a question about the, the thirty-four parking spaces. Does that include the four or five that are actually Culvers but are on your property?
Correct.
It does include those.
Yes.
Here's an interesting question. I figure you guys have, probably MEP question, not really something we need to know.
You say MEP?
Yeah. Uh, I actually developed a building, so. I've worked with them, they have seen all plans before. Uh, there's grease interceptors. I figure you guys have to have that probably by code because of the vacuum of oil on site. Okay, that makes sense.
But it's not for that. Well, I, I guess it is, so something, if something mistakenly gets in, right, that a cap.
Yeah, it caps, it caps out. I figure it's an MEP item. Um, one other question for you, not really super subject to the site, but I see you are moving power lines. Please start that process.
We actually have started talking DT, yeah, there.
It takes a very long time.
Yeah, we, we, we've been working with the seller of the property to basically complete an application to get a contact planner, so we can start that. No, you're right.
Okay, do you have a question?
Hey Doug, for, I, I, I've got it on GIS. I've got the site plan review. And Doug, can you throw it up? So we get a, uh, please and thank you and show your screen. Um, give it.
Yeah, any other, uh, questions for the applicant before we go to Doug's review? Go ahead.
So.
Oh, you have a question based on.
But I can wait too. So you're going to be, with respect to Culvers, are you going to be south of Culvers, between Culvers and the road?
No, west of Culvers.
You're going to be west of Culvers? And, uh, people are going to approach your I see Ann Arbor Jackson Road LLC. Uh. Yeah, I don't know, Doug's got it out. Um, I have seen. The sidewalk that you wanna get rid of is gonna wouldn't it also link Lowe's to a little bit?
You, you, the, the side, there's a sidewalk that comes down the Lowe's driveway that hooks up with the sidewalk on Jackson, so it's already there. It also hooks up with the Culvers on the Boulevard.
Right, right, right.
I mean, if Doug goes to page one hundred and twenty-eight in the packet, it shows where their, their customer entrance is. And it also shows how their sidewalk connects down to the sidewalk along Jackson Road. It's illustrated on that page.
I think it has been right there.
I don't know how you.
That's it right there, yep.
Pardon me, I don't know how you put a north sidewalk in.
I don't know either.
Because the problem is with the north, if you go down the Lowe's driveway and then walk the sidewalk, you've gotta go across all the vehicle entrance to Culvers, whether it's the drive-through or the parking.
I walked it today.
You, you go behind it. When you look at where the catch basins are going to be, it's gonna be tight. If you've squeezed a sidewalk and tight to the road and the drop off for the catch basin, you're now crossing their truck delivery part to back in.
Not necessarily, because if you went to a different page on.
Well, you could, you could come around the catch basin and link to the front.
They have shown it on one of the pages in the packet, sweeping down, going north of the catch basins, coming south, and then curving into the building entrance.
Yeah, there, plate number two had that, but it didn't have the catch basin of overlay underneath it. And if you try to compare, it looked challenging.
The question to me would be, is it something that we should be, um, even desiring? Not, how do I engineer it?
No, I, I.
If it can be done, they can do it.
I looked at it from a public safety and going, I don't really want anyone walking back there.
Right, do we want somebody there? Is this, has served any purpose is how I would.
Yes, I would agree with that. I would agree.
And how was your walk? What was your?
Well, what I would say is, if Doug, if you could zoom in on the, on that map again, where the sidewalk behind that goes north of Culvers is. So if you look at it, there's a, it comes off of the Boulevard, it goes a little bit north of west. And then before it gets to the parking lot of Culvers, there's a spur that goes north. There's a hatched crosswalk across that entrance driveway, and there's nothing on the other side. It's like somebody had an idea of having a walkway through the wetlands or on a bridge to Lowe's.
It dumps you into that gravel parking lot.
Nothing to.
Right.
Use for that.
Yeah.
So unless you were walking from Lowe's to come to Culvers, you wouldn't come down that Boulevard on foot and cut across that pathway. Uh, you could just as easily, as they're pointing out, go all the way down to the Jackson Road sidewalk and, and go over to the, the new business that they're proposing putting in, so. It doesn't make sense to have that. I mean, there's no purpose for putting it back there.
I would agree.
Yeah. I could engineer it, but I don't know that we want to.
Yes.
So is it now the time to do it? If we're gonna do it for future, is there gonna be future business back there? Or is it what, is it what that is? I mean, cause we, we've kind of passed on sidewalks and it's business in the ass, I think.
Well, this is behind the.
I, I know, I just, and I just wanna be punctilious about the, 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 we're saying give them a pass on a sidewalk to nowhere.
That's a county drain. It's not just the wetlands, that's a county.
No, 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 I appreciate that, but, uh, if people are gonna be on that photo in the center generally is Culvers, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And to the left or to the west is gonna go Bridgestown Firestone, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then people are gonna be there for a while and they're gonna go to Lowe's. And aren't they just gonna go the shortest distance and go to the north of Culvers and to the north, uh, 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 of, uh, fires, Firestone Bridgestone and take that? I mean.
It would save them a few steps.
I mean, don't you think that's the way, don't you think that's the way people are gonna walk? Cause if you have to drop your car off for a few hours, you're, you're, you're gonna spend so much time at Culvers.
You have to walk up to the front to go to the back, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, it, we, we, we gotta think.
But if you look at where the entrance is, the entrance is on the west side of the building at the southern corner. So it's going to be you, you're gonna have a choice if you're gonna walk to Lowe's. You're gonna walk north and go through a whole bunch of parking lot. And then get to Culvers, or you're gonna go across a little bit of grass, get to the Jackson Road, walk down Jackson Road. I'm gonna pick the grass.
The building entrance right here.
Yeah.
So when you come out after saying, okay, I'm gonna go to Lowe's.
I'm gonna pick the grass.
Go this way and go right, right down, but I mean, it's not a far walk. You could see it.
No, but just from aesthetics, I'm gonna pick the grass.
Yeah, I think the only thing, and Doug, maybe you can address this. Was there any thought about with that county drain, making that any kind of interesting space at all? I mean, why would they, there be a crosswalk in back of Culvers? Maybe you can kind of address the thinking that went through with that.
You guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't know if I can address the thinking necessarily, but I, I'll tell you what our thinking was. Um, and that is, if you look at this overall, well, let's first look at their site plan on this particular item. So this is the, this is where the sidewalk. This is the, this is where the sidewalk, where we're suggesting they figure out a way to connect to this. Instead of having people. You know, leave the, leave the site, walk to Jackson, walk down Jackson. Go back up to, so leave their site, walk to Jackson, walk along Jackson, then walk back up here. Or I guess they could go here to Culvers, but if they wanted to go to Lowe's, and, and that's not beyond the reasonable thought that. If someone's getting some work done on their car, I know I would, if, if a Lowe's was nearby, I think it'd be interesting to spend an hour. While they're fixing my car to maybe walk to Lowe's. And the idea of these, of this pathway, you can kind of see it. This is, I, I think the applicant mentioned in the first part of his, uh, comments that this was supposed to be. Kind of a strip center, and this was gonna be an extension of, you know, of, of, you know, the parking lot, and it was gonna be kind of seamless. And then this connection was supposed to connect to whatever was gonna happen here, and then people could walk. This, uh, you know, this pathway to the drive. And then there's, you know, a little, there's a little, uh, uh, dedicated pavement on the side of the drive. That's supposed to be walkway, that could then get you up to the parking lot, and then if you see up in the Lowe's parking lot. Uh, it ends here, and it ends there because this is another pedestrian walk, so you'd cross there, cross there. And then have a walk into Lowe's, and so that was sort of the idea. And because this is now not a strip center and just a standalone business, it kind of throws this idea off a little bit. But my, our whole concern, you know, our, our point here was that. This, it was planned this way, this is the connection. We, you know, we asked that, kind of a couple of times, is there a way you can make that connection? So that, you know, people who are getting their cars worked on could either, you know, have an easier walk to Culvers or an easier walk to. Lowe's, and, you know, you've heard what the applicant doesn't believe that's necessary. Um, I still have a feeling I would, it is necessary, I would kind of like to see it happen. Otherwise, this is, this little strip of sidewalk is just kind of hanging out there in no man's land. But that's kind of my, that's kind of my thinking, and I don't, I, I, I don't know. Why this is here, this little crosswalk thing that, um, was mentioned. Uh, I, you know, I just, I don't remember, I, I know there was some discussion about access to the wetlands. But how that was supposed to happen or when that was supposed to happen, I don't remember, I think I saw Mike Conter. On the, um. On the list of people who are watching, and Mike, Mike Conter was involved with this initial development, he may remember. Why that little, why this little walkway was placed, since he was the developer at the time. So i- if he's available, he might be able to shed some light on, on that particular issue.
Mike, if you can do that, if you raise your hand, if, if you have something to contribute.
Hello?
Yes. Go ahead. Yep.
Um, when, when that was originally, uh, developed as, uh, the Culvers. There was the, uh, request to add a, um. Mulched landscaped area. Just beyond that road, you know, something like one hundred feet that moved in a. Northwesterly direction, that there would then be a seating area. So that people could get something from Culvers, and if they wanted to enjoy the wetland. And the, uh, conservation area, they could sit there.
And it never happened.
We, the, the, actually, there's probably still the seating area back there. Um, the mulched, the mulched path was installed as well. And the area was grubbed out, but, um, you know, it's a. Natural area, and I'm sure the overgrowth has taken over that area.
And was that shown on the site plan as a part of site plan approval?
Um, you're asking me to go back?
Or maybe Doug can, if Doug knows.
Um, so I, I, I can't say whether it was or was not. I just know that was a condition that we had to adhere to at the time.
Yeah, you see it there, and perhaps there wasn't some, uh, carving out in of that.
Cause it is shown on the site plan, it needs to be maintained.
And that would be Culvers.
Right, that would be.
Yeah, I would guess it is shown on the site plan, now that, this is kind of ringing a bell, now that Mr. Conter mentioned that.
Um, Doug, is there?
Another view. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I was just wondering, is there any, um, you know, just looking at down the road and what's happening, is there any? Benefit to even connecting it to the private drive?
Oh, up here you mean?
Going to, to the west.
Oh.
The sidewalk going to, yeah. Is there any benefit at all?
Well, there's no walks on that drive. Didn't think of that, I, I would have to think about that, I, I'm not, I'm not so sure. That helps anything.
Just thinking.
Yeah, there's no, there's no walkway.
Side, that you, you end up having a kind of a shortcut, which you don't have to be on Jackson Road to go there.
Does the, does the plan? The planned, um, parking lot, does it come right up to the existing north sidewalk?
Yes. The entrance does.
Entrance does.
You're talking the one that's on the Culvers property?
Yeah. There's a sidewalk for the Firestone place.
Yeah.
It's me, the parking lot. Come up right next to the.
And I walk up to the screen?
Yeah, I don't need to walk to the screen and.
So. It actually is on there.
The sidewalk is right here, that success, right?
Right. I would, if you could all, you could kind of really see that if the employees are parking here, this is how they get into their Culver, to the, to the building. But. You know, the way we oriented the project, which I think we can all see is a benefit, is we made so that the operation is invisible to the public. Right, so the pass from Mars on Jackson, that's a benefit, right? So then you have to invite the pedestrian to do this, so they go over to here. You gotta go one, two crossings where you've got stuff going on. And then you're taking out landscaping or maybe pushing this back and making more, more pavement, it just seemed like to me that. Why would we do that when we have this right here? And the front door is located right here, we, you can just utilize the infrastructure that you have. And this is.
No door on the east side, west, just south.
This is where the customer entrance is right here.
Southwest open.
Correct.
What about any employee entrances?
Well, the bay doors are all here, so my guess is when they park their vehicles, you know, then they'll enter the building, how, you know, whatever's open and.
How far is that setback from, uh, the sidewalk now?
Well, here's the property line, so we're adhering to its property.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-five feet away from the property line.
Is near dimension, you said?
Property line or right away?
Well, this is seventy-three feet to the right of way.
To the right of way?
Yeah, and I would argue if somebody's gonna walk to Lowe's. A shorter distance, they know they're walking the wrong way. I mean, you know, so if they think this is like too long to walk, well, they're walking the wrong way to go to Lowe's. Well, if you're saying that you would rather do the grass route instead of, who, so who said that, somebody said the grass route? So what would be the grass route going to the rear? There wouldn't be a grass route, cause to me it's all, it appears that it's all paved and back here. And it seems like it's all operation and busyness, and why would you wanna go back here and walk along the doors and then kind of get involved in here?
I'm telling you, people are gonna do that, you know, I don't need a sidewalk, I need pavement, and people are gonna do, I, I mean, I'm, I'm saying that.
No, and, and some are, yes.
Yeah, I, I think they're just gonna say, I, and, and it's not that crowded, so they're just gonna walk that way on. Driveway on pavement and they're gonna get there and it's not that crowded and it's gonna be okay. Problem, and, but we've got kind of a sidewalk going to nowhere now, that's, sorry.
That's right, and I think Bob wanted to comment.
Yes, sorry. That's okay, Doug, if you could, could you go to the very last? Pick, uh, slide, which, on mine, it's forty-one of forty-one, and I don't know.
And, and, and the site plan?
On what you're on right now, you could go to the very last one. It's the, it's the lighting.
Oh, okay.
But, but in the lighting plan, they actually show a sidewalk. That comes from that spur, that sidewalk to nowhere, around the. Around the, uh, infiltration basins, and then crosses. The southeast, see how it comes down and crosses the entrance from.
Yeah.
So it crosses over and it goes, it actually wraps around the. East, north, and then west side of the building, but it could just as easily have been drawn to come across the south side of the building. And you could have put a sidewalk in there, right over to the entrance, so it, it misses. What you were worried about, Bob, or it could.
Yeah, it misses the retention.
The retention basins and, or the infiltration. So when we were in for the special use, we were showing something, that's what we were showing.
Right.
And then when we got into the engineering of the project, we relooked it and said, boy, that.
Why are we doing that, right?
Why are we doing, and it just kind of seemed like a, an unnecessary feature. But I just wanted to point out that it's laid out here, if somebody on the commission wanted to. Push for the sidewalk. It's, it actually has been laid in pretty nicely.
In, in this scenario, you know, it, when you cross, you're gonna go right by the dumpster and tire enclosure. Then you're gonna walk between the dumpster and tire enclosure.
A barrier wall.
It's a barrier wall, you walk between it, then you're gonna walk all the way along the face of the overhead doors as well.
No, 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 I'm saying come across the south face.
Well, the south side, we record to have foundation landscape, so then it'd be pushed even further out, and it would be almost parallel to the existing.
Walk by their green.
We have a, we have a Jackson Road sidewalk and then another sidewalk right next to it, which again, doesn't. Make a whole lot of common sense, I guess, so.
Which redundant, and.
Right. Yeah.
Other people are thinking, how could we do it, so I just wanted to point out.
Yeah, fair enough.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, when you walk out of the, 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 the west side, out of the in- entrance. Um, and you're stepping into the parking area, right? And then, when you try to access the Jackson Road, um, sidewalk, do you have to go over grass?
No, we're proposing a sidewalk all the way out to that sidewalk. Yeah.
Oh, just asking the same thing.
Yeah.
And that's actually the reason why. So I'm the, I'm the one that's behind this, that's driving it, and my engineers, like, you sure you want to, yeah, I think, I think we should probably talk about this. Culvers has a sidewalk that goes out to Jackson Road. We're gonna have one go, why can't that be the sidewalk that connects to businesses? Instead of having another series of sidewalks, I mean, you're right, you're never gonna stop every, anybody from, let's say, taking another route, it's gonna happen, right? But this is the route that we're planning, we're planning for people to use, and why have two? That's all.
Unless there's something on the other side of the private drive that we wanna do, which there isn't anything, right? Um, uh, just. A, a question, we haven't gotten to Doug's report yet, and, um, engineering, so I do wanna go there and then we can. Have more discussion on the, the tree mitigation, the sidewalk, the, everything else, but. Go ahead, Doug, why don't you go through the basic points of your report and then we'll do O H M.
Okay. Find my report, okay. So, um, just a little background for everybody, probably, um. Sure you are, you remember this, it wasn't that long ago, uh, back in November, actually October, it was in front of you for conditional land use approval. For minor motor vehicle repair, and then it went in front of the township trustees in November, November twenty-eighth, the twenty-twenty-three. And was granted approval with a couple of conditions, uh, one is that two level-two EV charging stations be installed. And the others let a pollution prevention and, uh, plan be provided. Uh, we found that they have met both of those conditions with this current, uh, plan, so it meets the conditional land use. Uh, quit, um, conditions. Um, and so now we have in front of us the site plan, so we're done with the conditional land use part. Uh, use has been acceptable by the township, and now we're looking at the site plan. So, um, our review just does come down to a few items, the applicant has done a good job of putting together, um, this. Particular site plan and meeting all of the various standards for most of the site plan stuff, including. All of the standards for vehicle repair facilities, which are contained on page nine and ten of our report. And I'm not gonna get into each one of those unless you have questions about them. Uh, but we're really down to, um, eight items that are, that show up on page ten of our review. And some of them are pretty simple and can be fixed relatively easily. Uh, some need some discussion and/or some additional information from the applicant, the, um. The easy one is the applicant has to, uh, uh, change the page numbers so that they. That they're more consecutive, that's something that obviously can happen pretty simply. The, uh. Um, that's another easy one here, then we'll get to the harder ones, um. Uh, we need some sign details for the Bridgestone sign, I say that's easy because all signs also have to get separate sign permits. Uh, from the township, so. Uh, while we do like to see signs, and it is actually required to show the signage on your site plan, um. This doesn't approve your signs, regardless, you still have to meet sign standards, so. We just would like to see the detail, the Bridgestone wall sign, as we know in our review. Um, and then the more substantive things, uh, is really the, the twenty-five mitigation trees, um. And. Uh, the applicant's engineers correct, there's a five-year sunset on the tree mitigation. Uh, however. You know, we're trying to base our calculation on the plans submitted to us, and if nothing else, we need. A, a revised tree survey or a tree plan that clearly shows. The trees that are now being removed instead of all the, all the trees on the site. So I guess we'd be willing to look at that point, uh, with the five-year sunset on tree mitigation. Uh, but, you know, we, we're, we're, our review comments are based on the plans that are submitted to us, so. Plans that are submitted to us would indicate twenty-five mitigation trees are required. And then we, you know, defer to the township engineer on utility issues, and then we have the issue of the parking waiver. Um, that's to allow nine additional spaces on the site. The, uh, as you know, and the planning commissioners, you know, we, we talk about this a lot at meetings, and that is the CYO township standards are not. Necessarily just a minimum, they're also a maximum, now, we're trying to limit. Uh, impervious surfaces, and so we have a maximum number of parking spaces, and. The only way you can go over or under, as far as that goes, is to have the planning commission allow you to go over or under. The planning commission is not inclined to allow a waiver, they're simply gonna have to remove nine parking spaces. Um, they've, the, the applicant briefly mentioned why they think they need those parking spaces, and that's based on. Uh, I think their experience, um, you know, statewide, perhaps nationwide, about the number of parking spaces they believe they need. Uh, however, um, we do have our own standard, and again, the whole intent of that is to. Try to limit impervious surfaces. We are, we already talked the pedestrian pathway pretty hard, um, I'm, I'm still. I guess since I saw this project when it came through, when it was Culvers, and I saw a couple different iterations of the strip center. That I, I just have this, you know, desire to have that piece of sidewalk connected in some manner. Um, it just seems like that connection could occur, and, uh, I, I, I. I think what's gonna happen, I would tend to agree with Commissioner Rizer, that people are gonna walk out that door and they're just gonna walk in the drive and up the next drive and walk on their driveway. Uh, the connecting driveway with Culvers instead of walking out to Jackson, that's what I would do, but it's just, it, it. We won't say anymore about that, you guys talked a lot about that, and I guess, I'll, if you have any questions, when, when we get to that part, I'll try to help you with that as much as I can, um. The, uh, parking lot trees along the perimeter of the parking lot, rather than within the parking lot. The ordinance indicates that parking lot trees are supposed to be within a parking lot. Um, but it also allows perimeter parking lot trees, uh, if approved by the planning commission, so that's something you will have to weigh in on. We have kind of in the past, um, approved this sort of situation before. Part of the idea for parking. Part of the idea for parking lot trees is to provide shade. On the parking lot to help, you know, reduce kind of the heat that's generated from asphalt and pavement. And parking lot trees that are adjacent to a parking lot will also serve that purpose. Um, but uh, again, that's something that the planning commission has to um. Uh, agree upon. And I think that's it, we already talked, already talked about the signs, so really just a few bigger, bigger picture issues, again, generally speaking, the applicants done a nice job with the site plan. Uh, but there's a few things that you, you guys have to determine and um. And that's the uh, the, the parking, the trees adjacent to the parking lot, the extra parking spaces. And um, the tree mitigation, uh, I think that is, might be more of a clarification thing. But as presented, they, you know, we're, I'm standing by our comments as presented, they need twenty five mitigation trees. If they want to provide a different plan, we will certainly look at that different plan and um. Uh, you know, of course, we'll follow the ordinance standards uh, for, for that kind of situation. So uh, that's it, we're just, uh, you know, as long as these items can be addressed to your satisfaction, um. Uh, we would support the project moving forward.
So a question.
I'd like to follow up on the parking space issue, so Doug, I have a question for you, the maximum. Was designed for commercial projects? Like this one?
Yes.
Okay. And. The nine additional spaces that they're asking for. Is that in the, in the back or the spaces would be in the back of the building?
Yeah, they're, they're just wherever, I, I don't know that they're specified where they are, there's just nine extra.
So are the parking spaces in the back of the building that you, the additional parking spaces?
Yeah, I mean, almost all the parking spaces are technically in the back or to the sides.
Although, and to the north, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the customer spaces, we presume, are to the west of the building.
Are you right on that place?
So you're asking, are you asking for more than? You're asking for all those nine spaces to be in the west of the building, at the west of the building?
Also find which spaces.
It's, it's all, it's all encompassing, but the thirty, so. They really want.
Spaces are looking for to be some in the west of the building and some in the back of the building?
If you, they want, they, my, my, the retailer, Firestone, they desire to have thirty spaces. Four of the five, one, two, there's four of those spaces are really so far away, they're, they're really culver spaces and as you look at the plan. So really, we have thirty spaces around the business. This exceeds the requirement for the township, but thirty is really the magic number that they want.
So you would live with five?
With five.
So you're allowed to have twenty five, you really want thirty, but you're asking for thirty four.
Right.
Because thirty, four of them are really used by Culvers, not them.
Correct, technically on our property.
And we were just gonna leave them and kind of, just kind of continue that last one there that was part of the plan and. And my guess is the Firestone employees won't use those because they're so far away. Um, from, from the building.
Well, they can catch mass transit, that would, they'd be right at the building. I mean, these are things that we deal with, I don't mean to be funny at all.
No.
Um.
But I, I have no objection, I mean, if we'd like to pare some spaces down, I would, I could do away with those spaces up there, that won't be counted against me, but I don't think that's probably the right thing to do. Cause I think that they're using, they would, they, they're using them, Culvers owners.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's hitting up against. What we're trying to do in the township, but I hear you.
Um. Yeah, I think we should listen to O H M and then we can come back and, and discuss more in detail, all right, Stacy.
All right, we recommended approval of these plans in our letter from March eleventh, we had three minor site plan comments. Uh, we also recommended the internal sidewalk connection to Culvers that was already discussed tonight. We noted a minor discrepancy in the number of E V spaces that's listed in the site plan application versus what's shown on the plans. I think the application is just incorrect and needs to be updated to match the plans. And then we also noted that the sheet numbers needed to be verified and corrected. Uh, just a reminder for everyone, we provide the preliminary detailed engineering comments in our letters, but those don't affect our site plan recommendation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Stacy?
I, would that include the stormwater management, is that Stacy's?
Yes.
I do have a question for you, Stacy. Um, when looking at the stormwater. Retention, is it, is it infiltration or detention, I can't, can't remember. The stormwater, um.
I believe they're infiltration, yeah.
Okay, thank you, um, and I don't have the right. Slide pulled up, but um. The existing. Parking lot for Culvers has. Uh, and has islands on their west side of their parking. Well, it's not, can't even call it parking, it's their drive-through area on their west side. Then there's a, an island, but there's cuts in the curb and it lets water flow to a. Stormwater grate. And I think it's called a overflow, is that, and, and so. I'm not quite sure what the word overflow means. To Culvers. But what, what do they use it for right now? And they put it in and they didn't put it in on their property.
I can, I can answer that if, yeah, so that's a, that's a, it's a spillway, basically still drainage from their. Their drive-through is just directed out and there's actually a, a catch basin, it's a yard basin right now. That's directly west of where that spillway is, there's an existing yard basin where that drainage goes to. It's on our, it's on our property, but this is a. Remember, this is a, this is a site condo, so there's two units, the Culvers, Culvers is a unit, we're a unit. So the rest of, there, there's a bunch of common area and stormwater system is a shared system as well. Um, so.
You're developing that area, you're developing that area for your retention, your infiltration.
Yes, but. The existing detention pond, there's a detention pond by Cul. In front of Culvers to the east. And the side, the, the volume in that pond is for this entire site, both units. We are proposing infiltration in that area to meet the stormwater quality requirements of the county and the township. Culvers also has some infiltration areas, there's one kind of other southeast, west of their building, there's another one. We have to add some more water quality, but our actual. Flood volume, our, our detention volume is already accounted for in that Culvers basin and this whole system is. Uh, all interlinked together.
You just said it, it's all been taken into account. When, in the calculations for these bases, that's where I was headed.
Yeah.
Because I could see its location. Is on your property or this unit's property and right next to your basins that you're going to be putting in. And it actually would act like an overflow for your basin and then drain to the front underground.
Yes, and we are, our infiltration basins are actually connecting to that. Location, one of them is, another one goes to the south, but to the, the existing storm that Culvers installed. That convey everything over to the main detention pond in front of Culvers to the east. And then it'll be outlet as it is today, yes.
Okay, so you answered it, they took, it's all been taken into account, both Culvers property and yours, cause I could see this. If that wasn't taken into account, it would exceed, it would cost yours.
No, it's all been taken into account, we've, we've met with uh, Washtenaw County, our resources, you know, had. That meeting, we've done infiltration testing, we've submitted to Washtenaw County, kind of, our resources with the whole plan and stuff, so. Um, so yeah, we've, we're well on our way to making sure that it's taken care of.
I have a question for Stacy.
Oh, go ahead.
Unless there's somebody else who wants. Stacy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm looking at your memo. Um, and you are also, um. You're recommending that the applicant provide a sidewalk connection from the proposed site. To nearby existing sidewalk at the northwest corner of Culvers. Right?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's the, that's the pathway sidewalk that we've been talking about.
Yep, yep.
Okay, and why are you recommending that?
Honestly, I think I'm like Doug and I think it could still be beneficial, but I also am. On board with some of the other commissioner comments that have been said tonight that. It could be redundant, um, they might still create a goat path there anyways, it's hard to say. Honestly, I'm indifferent on if it's. Necessary or would be used, we recommend it, cause that's. Typical for what we see in um, plans like this and. Yeah, I mean, I, I could go either way, I think.
And you would be comfortable with a pathway, like a asphalt pathway? Uh, or are you, in your recommendation, you envisioned a concrete sidewalk?
Generally, we seek uh, the concrete sidewalk for something like this, but a pathway would serve the same purpose.
Except for wheelchairs or.
Yes, hey Stacy, it's Ryan, uh, just from experience. And knowing how you guys look at the two percent A D A slope, asphalt probably won't meet your tolerances for a pathway there.
Yeah, I mean, that's all the fine, final detailed grading that would get kind of hashed out in the next phase, so I'm unsure on existing.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I guess the question I have is when you guys are looking at the sidewalk. And, you know, with the limited access to the engineering plans that I can see and obviously I'm not an engineer. Do we think physically there's enough space to. Place that, I mean, the grading on the grading map looks like it's doable from, from an elevation standpoint. Is there physically enough space, you know, just because we put it onto the computer generated image, doesn't mean it actually will fit there. I would figure it would.
I mean, from what we have now, it looks like it would fit, but the, the final detailed grading could.
Yeah.
Put it elsewhere or restrict that it gets constructed at all, um, that's kind of hard to say now without knowing those final grades.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, I just had a, a question about the, um, you have uh, three different types of like seed mix, you have the. Um. Stormwater, the grass seed, and then the native seed mix and maybe I missed it, but I didn't see a key. Is the native seed mix supposed to be along the wetland areas?
The, the very north side of the hill, yes, yes, that'd be the intent.
And is there a reason why you didn't like do more of the native planting, I mean, you have this. You know, the detention and the infiltration basin and then you've put sod all, all around it, I'm just wondering. What the thought was there and why not do more native plantings there, just because. You, you, you know, we've got, especially because you're asking for additional parking spaces, turf doesn't do much for. Um, you know, a- absorbing stormwater and so forth, but you know, you could have a really nice natural area there.
Yeah, that's kind of what we're going for with the infiltration area, I suppose that certainly if uh. The desire was to eliminate the sod, to put a more native planting in that area, that, that's something that would be. Uh, could be entertained for sure.
Maybe offset some of the additional impervious area for the, it's a better use of landscaping or.
Yeah, that whole area there, that whole area there where the infiltration basin is. Could be, you know, could be more native, there's no objections from the applicant.
Same question about parking spaces again.
Yeah, you go ahead with the parking.
I don't, yeah. I'm trying to count. And I'm looking at, in our meeting deck, it's one eight, page one eighteen, it's. Yeah, it's C zero one.
I were trying to.
Yeah.
It's, it's C zero one in the deck. And it's got parking spaces around the proposed building and on the west, there are twelve and there's a little number twelve circled. To the north, there's fourteen and there's a little fourteen circled, and on the east, there are eight and there are eight circles, so that gets thirty four. And then if you look at the top, you can show how the trucks can move around. There's seven more, which is, I'm sure, or I'm guessing are the seven that you're talking about, part of Culvers and no one's gonna park up there. So how many are really lap? We, we, we bounce numbers around.
Okay, eighty five, twenty five is by ordinance.
Right, okay, and around the building, there are thirty four, and then there are seven way up in the north.
There, there are only three, four.
Right, no, no, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to get my head around.
The numbers.
The numbers, yes.
Yeah, so there are thirty four parking spaces around the building.
Right, that's, that's all, that's all.
Thirty four, they're asking for nine.
No, the, the ordinance apparently says twenty five max, they're asking for nine, so that they.
Get to thirty four.
Right.
Plus the, that including the Culver.
If I'm understanding it correctly.
Doug, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, our, our, our review says twenty one required parking spaces.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And then thirty four total. That, so we count the same, um, as was just noted, but the applicant is indicating that the four. Existing spaces that are on their property are actually more Culver spaces. And are existing and we, we kind of agreed with that assertion, that's where we came up with the nine. But if you include, yep, go ahead, sorry.
If it's twenty one plus nine is thirty and they have thirty four not including the Culvers.
Right, we're counting differently than you did, I think.
Got thirty four including.
Not including.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying thirty four with Culvers.
There are thirty four around the proposed building.
Yes.
But not including Culvers.
Right.
Right, thirty four plus whatever we're gonna count up.
We won't count Culvers, there's like three and a half.
But the ordinance doesn't say twenty five maximum, it says twenty four maximum. Twenty one maximum.
Twenty one.
Thank you.
And Doug, just to verify, when I read your review letters, seven bays times three spots per bay, that's how you came to that number, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is, is there a allocation for? Three per bay and then. Additional for employees, I thought for the ordinance, I don't have it in front of me right now.
Additional for the uh, towing vehicles, if you had some.
Or staff.
Or staff? I think he's asking you, it's twenty, seven times three plus staff.
Yeah, that's where I think I, in my calculation anyways, came up with twenty five, I had twenty one plus four for employees, if that's where the.
Oh, you came up with.
Okay, so that, may, may, maybe the four for the employees is my incorrect interpretation, I just wanna.
Well, that's Doug.
Yeah, can you pull up the ordinance, Doug?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking it up right now.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah.
Is, is it likely to get, you'll need three. Spots. Per seven bays? I mean, is that what they, is that what?
Well, there's actually eight bays, there's one of the bays is a little smaller, um, it's their alignment bay. But there's, there's eight bays total for the building.
Hmm, which would be twenty four.
Four.
I think, I think if we provided the fixture plan and in the fixture plan, it doesn't show a vehicle in that eight bay. I think, but if you look at the building elevation, you'll see that there's eight bays. The one bay at the back being the alignment bay.
Kind of comes down to the definition, yeah.
So. I mean. I, I, I know that there's Firestone in downtown Ann Arbor, I know that there's Firestone. In Briarwood and there's probably other Firestones that are escaping me, but thirty four or even thirty or twenty five just seems. Like a lot of spots or maybe it really doesn't, cause I'm not in that business, I just don't. I, I, as I drive by those places, I don't recall seeing two, half a dozen cars.
Especially not the one downtown.
I was gonna say, the one downtown, so yeah, you don't wanna.
This morning Doug was part of another project we built in another community and parking was the concern that we weren't providing enough. We were.
Oh, I know.
We were providing thirty.
Right.
And the reason why I threw out the number that they have thirty-two appointments is what they would generally have, is to kind of explain, show you. Plus the employees, how the parking spaces are really needed, and how they, how they turn over, right, how they turn over. Um, Saturdays is really the busiest day, obviously, and then during the week, you know, it's less busy. But you're always planning for when you really need them.
Okay, so, but if, uh, it'd be good to get the ordinance because I. And we, I would think that you could include the alignment as a bay. Okay, that would be a reasonable assumption, and still a, and so that would be twenty-four spaces by ordinance. Okay, and can you read that for us?
Come on, you guys, alright, so it's, uh, it says automobile repair facility. Three per service stall plus one per each service vehicle. So that's it.
Doesn't say anything about employees.
Nope.
Okay. Okay, so by ordinance, it would be twenty-four, we could, we could interpret that as twenty-four by ordinance, is that reasonable, Doug? And count the alignment bay?
Yeah, if you count all the bays, it just says service stall.
It's a service. And I'm willing to, to. Consider more in exchange for a link in the sidewalk, which I think is important, because now's the time to do it. Uh, but that's just me, and if I'm one against six, then I won't lose sleep, that's just how I feel on that. I also like the idea of um. A native plantings along, uh, the retention pond rather than, you know, Kentucky bluegrass and sod, it's just more of a. A natural environment there along, along, you know, Jackson Road there, I think that's nice, you can put native plantings in front for. For all I care, but I'm not gonna press that, um, but, but are, are we, where we need to be on the trees? As far as the number.
I, I think, I think they are because. What they did is they showed the site plan they submitted was the tree survey for, from, bu- before five years ago. And so Doug's interpretation is as long as they document that those trees were not there, then the, the trees are.
So did whoever take those trees down have to account for them, account for them, or is it just like walk into the tracks?
I'll just say I was not on the planning commission.
The question is, if you look at it as two separate rather than a condo or whatever. Culvers may have been within their rights, whoever developed it, to take them down and not trigger the mitigation. And then they do theirs and not trigger, but combined, if you look at it one group.
Oh, you'll get those down the road, and then the down the road, they say, oh, we're not putting them up because we didn't take them down.
So I'm giving a hypothetical, if you look at each as a separate. Do the number of trees taken down in each trigger it versus if you look at it as one, the total number of trees may trigger, I, I don't know the answer to that because. Obviously, I wasn't here.
Maybe Doug knows, do you know?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's a correct interpretation that these were looked at separately. The Culvers at the time met the standard, from what I, from what I'm hearing from the applicant, I, we will have to do a little digging on that, but. Yeah, if they can, if they can prove that, I mean, they're, they're gonna have to do it, or they're, they're, there, there's, this isn't a variance situation, they, they're simply gonna have to do it. If, if they can't show that, that those trees were removed, you know, five years, over five years ago. You know, they'll have to provide the twenty-five trees, so that's just, there's, there's no.
So they're, they're using the tree survey that was, that was done in two thousand twelve, and it shows the trees there, but they're not there now, they're, they were in the middle of the site, so they're.
Oh, could that be easily uh, dealt with by uh, someone going out, so. Someone from your office going out with firestone and looking at the survey that was provided and seeing that those trees are removed? Would it be as easy as that?
That would be, that would be.
Certainly could be, I, I guess I prefer a revised drawing for the file.
There's a, right next to your dumpsters, uh, there's a. I'm trying to remember what you call it, because I'm looking at one that doesn't call it anything, there's an area for, um. It looks like a semi-parking for loading, I think it called it a loading zone.
Yes.
One will be parked there. And how are you gonna get it in there, you didn't, I mean, it's, there's not much clearance between the building and the dumpsters, so. Somebody's gonna have to be really precise to get it in there. If it's a semi. So they get new, they get tires delivered, new, new tire delivery at least once a week? And that's where they're gonna park? So that way they're out of the way.
How do they get there?
On the C O one is the page.
Yeah, it shows the turning.
It shows how the truck went back into that area. C O one. C ten doesn't.
Page one-one-eight of our.
I'm at C ten now, and C ten is. Not, oh, C O one, C O one. Bridgestone would like to see a designated loading area so that the truck isn't sitting somewhere and they have to. That inconvenience the. You're saying that shows them getting it in there. I'm saying that that looks like a really good parking job if they can get it in there. You show it line to line, no, you show it overlapping the loading, I mean, the dumpster bins. When that, when that's parked, the tires are on top of the. The software program for the auto turn is more restrictive, I see you nodding on the head, but it's true. The semi truck drivers actually are way better at the, what this, what this program will do. Okay, I'll, I'll accept that and say that you're comfortable, and so I'll be comfortable. But I will also say if we ask, ask for a sidewalk, ladies and gentlemen. I would say it should not come into the southeast. Area of the building and then walk up the east side where there's gonna be a semi park there, and then across the bays where. Cars are gonna come in and out, I'd say the sidewalk ought to come across the south side of the building. And I know you objected because your landscaping doesn't account for that, but I bet it could. So I'm just gonna toss it out that if we ask for a sidewalk, it come across the south side.
I, I would say the south side, but you need a landscape buffer in between. So you're really duplicating the sidewalks.
Well, it isn't that much, you move over three feet and you've counted for the plantings, if you look at their planting.
I mean, you really, if you're gonna have grow anything, you want. Commissioner Reiser, you were talking about the sidewalk?
No, I understand, I've for, I've forgotten how many feet from the current sidewalk the building will be set back. Seven?
Seventy.
I don't call five feet. Here's their landscaping plan. And you're saying you couldn't put a sidewalk through here? And have trees on each side of it and bushes up against the building?
Oh, there's plenty of room to do it, but I wouldn't put it across the building.
No, not right up yet, I said across.
Uh, just on the south side.
On the south side of the building, I'm sorry, I said across, yeah, I see how I.
You're gonna get tires delivered once a week? New, new, I guess, once, I mean, I don't know.
And then, but also you're gonna be walking across the bays, you're gonna actually.
I appreciate, yeah, no, I, I get it, yeah, you're right, folks, yeah, thanks.
I, I guess the other option for that would be to come red, um, go up.
Into the island up here?
Go the northern.
Or the northern route and connect the other way, because then it isn't as a, it's really truly an alternative then.
I'll just throw this out one last time, so. You know, we've been encouraged to develop the building so that it's up on the street. But all parking in the back, but all, but yet we still, even though we're so, we're close to the street where there's a sidewalk. Right, we still would like to introduce another sidewalk between the building and the street sidewalk. It, it just seems like you're gonna have two pathways there, that are so close together, that get to the same destination, I don't understand. Wh- what, why that is so desirable, other than the fact that some people are going to do it anyway, so that we've just given them a sec, two rounds. You're not the only ones that we've discussed this with, when we have condominiums that are put in. We want interconnectivity as well as external connectivity. So we're asking for an internal sidewalk that is half there right now. And you are going to eliminate it. And so it's just gonna stop. And it. We want.
I wouldn't, I, I'm not proposing to connect to it, you're right.
We're not, I, we haven't made a decision yet, but I'm saying, this is the kind of discussion we have.
That's the reason why I wanted to bring it to the floor, let's have it out, because I. Want to have a sidewalk, I'm looking at this going, why would I have to build two hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk when there's a sidewalk there, right?
Well, your, your, your workers on their break can take a walk.
There you go.
Okay, it's not just for. It's a campus, it's a neighborhood now.
And, and that's why I sort of would like it to be on the north side and not duplicate on the south side.
I just don't want it to go wrap around.
If we're connecting the road, and then we're connecting it all the way out to Gerber. There really isn't any reason not, if you're gonna put the road in, to put the sidewalk there as well. So you'd have the sidewalk on the north part, it would come down, it would come down to the western side of the building. So you're not walking by the bays, you're not walking, you've gotta walk past where the truck might be once a week, for an hour, it's backing up. But that's, if you had to put it in, that's where I would put it.
I didn't follow that.
I, i- if you've gonna put it, the connector in, the road's coming from Lowes Drive. Through Culvers, all the way across to Gerber, so you can get into Firestone. The existing Culver sidewalk is there sort of already. If you're putting the road in, you put the sidewalk next to the road, you go along the northern, to the western side. And then you come down the western side of the building to the entrance, because that. Creates the least amount of public safety for crossing bays, truck lanes. Entrances with cars.
You're saying extend this, because they already have a sidewalk in front of the building, so you're saying extend that sidewalk all the way north and then cut across.
And then cut down the western side to the western side of the building where there's a sidewalk already.
Right, and you started there, but yeah. Culvers over to the west.
If, if you're gonna insist on the.
Parking like creating a pathway.
That makes the most sense.
If we're connecting it.
You don't have an engineer, so we're asked, we, we realize this is an ask. But it's because of the internal circulation that we're asking.
So I don't know if this is appropriate, I, I agree with. Mister Reiser, um, I, I'm gonna tend to be um. A little bit strict about the parking. For bigger po- uh, policy, planning policy reasons. Um, I don't have a problem with including that smaller bay to get to twenty-four spaces. Um, and I'd be agreeable to giving you a couple more spaces. But I want the pathway that we've been talking away, I don't care if you call it a sidewalk or whatever. Um, I, we've had our planner recommended, we've had our, um, our engineer recommended. Um, and I think one of the good points, I believe Mr. Lahn made earlier was that, you know, this is. Part of the condo concept of interlinking these prop, you know, these properties together, I get your point about the Jackson Road, I get it. So, um, that, that's where I would stand on the, um, on the, um. Parking spaces, and then with regard to the trees, just give us some new survey. Just in a survey, that, if, if what you say is true, and I don't have any reason to believe it's not true, we just need some verification.
A question on the number of spaces, okay, because we've got. Uh, and I, I, I think we can all agree, it sounds like we're in agreement that we're not gonna car, count the Culver spaces. Just around here, so Firestone says you need thirty. You have, you show thirty-four.
So you want me to take four?
They need thirty-four.
Thirty, no. Excuse me, they said, Fire, the applicant said Firestone needs thirty.
So if you, if you, if, if you're considering going back to what the code would allow, which is twenty-four. I would ask, I can't go to twenty-four, I could live with thirty. Thirty-four is nice for them, they kind of stretch out their arms a little bit, right, and have a little few more, but I, I have to have thirty around the building.
So you want six more?
So I want twenty-four plus six around the building.
So that would be the, the minimum, so that's less than what they're asking for in this plan.
If you look at it that way, we're trading four parking spots of impervious material for sidewalk that's impervious. Are they matching exactly? No, but it's, it's a fair trade off.
And then improving the native landscaping around the detention would al- also help offset that impervious.
Aesthetically, it's gonna look better.
And I'll say on the tree, every couple of years, um, there's a flyover and G I S map launched. Um, so there's maps from twenty-three, twenty-twenty, there's lots of overheads that probably tell you what trees were there. Maybe you need a survey, but Doug, you can probably just go to, you can tile on the years over and, and see. Get a sense of what was there and what wasn't there, uh, you know.
I, I think that's something they can work out with.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it, yeah, we're not giving them any variance to the tree.
Say, he doesn't need a survey?
What about the trees in the parking lot, are people okay with the perimeter?
Yes, I'm okay with it along Jackson Road or along, I'm okay. Uh, I'm okay on the perimeter, dr- north or south or east or west, that's me.
If we, if we were ten years ago talking about Culvers, I would insist in, only because I have dogs, if I came off the highway to park to grab a bite to eat. Trees in the parking lot provide more shade, my dog isn't gonna cook in the car in the summer versus, but I'm not taking my dog to Firestone when I grab my car off.
Those are gonna be nice fires.
Yeah, uh, also, I, I do think it's, it's also. This doesn't have, it, it's one, a lot of the parking's one-sided, so it isn't like you have a huge mass of parking that you need the trees to break it off. And it's also concrete, which is. Okay, um, yeah, Commissioner Hyde.
These are very minor, so I, I've been waiting, um, you have a dumpster but no recycle bin. Do you have much packaging of product that gets brought in that you end up having to throw out because you're not recycling?
There's, there's two dumpsters that are in that enclosure, one is for recycling and one is for general refuse.
I thought it was for tires.
The, 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 the rectangle that's behind that enclosure is for tires, the one that's in front of it is for two dumpsters.
Oh, okay, so there is a recycle bin in there, okay, it isn't spoken of, so.
Well, they don't necessarily show it.
Yeah, we should label that in the site plan because that, that, that there are two dumpsters, that there's a recycle bin in a, a.
We did point out that the entire building is basically a big recycle center. Tires and used oil, right?
And this will ensure that you have that other piece there, it's good to show it on the site plan.
Little bit more, um. You. What actually state, I think this is either Doug's, I think it's Doug's, this is for you. It labels, the Bridgestone sign is on the south side of the building when you refer to it. And I, I thought Bridgestone, this is a Firestone, but there actually is a Bridgestone, it's on the north side.
Right.
So in your write-up, Doug, that's where I was wanting to point. I think. I think that's it.
And that Bridgestone sign is not illuminated.
Right.
Yeah.
But it, it's all coming in, uh, on separate signage. Maybe that's where we take your, your furniture.
Okay. Alright, so what, what I hear, uh, from the planning commission is. A sidewalk connection, um, to the north.
Coming in from the.
From the north, connecting to the west, the existing west sidewalk. A, a total of thirty parking spaces.
Around the building.
Around the building, that including the, the Culvers existing, e- existing spaces, we could say. And, uh, in native seed. Seeding, um, in the whole area around the, the detention area, infiltration, we'll just call it the stormwater.
Detention.
The stormwater, uh. The stormwater, uh, detention.
And we allow the, um.
Yeah.
Trees that would, another one that would like to be around the perimeter.
Right, and the per- and, uh, perimeter trees, parking lot trees.
That's, uh, number six on page ten, by the way, so page ten is our, is there a model here?
No.
Because the bottom of page ten can help.
Edit towards a approval with change, or do they need to come back with a new site plan to show this walkway and how it's gonna work? Because I'm not, I don't know how they're gonna connect from here, um, across here.
I, I think.
Or is it gonna have to go up north?
It, it could go either way and connect, I think that's up to them, they're gonna be redoing, taking out four spaces. I think that could be with Doug, and it has to then.
Before it goes to the.
Uh, before the. Yeah, I think, if, if people are comfortable with that.
Depends on how they work out the path, that, that sidewalk.
And I, I think it needs to be.
Well, we'll make it toward an agenda, it's not on, uh, uh.
Can I just finish? No, I was like, I just wanted to say, I think it needs to be detailed in the motion, so that the board understands what they have to follow up on.
Okay. I.
Usually they like us to.
Have everything sewn up.
All sewn up and.
But, yeah, um, Doug, are you comfortable with reviewing the, the sidewalk?
Yes, yep, I think we can work something out.
We would propose we would not take it across that main east-west dry aisle. We would keep it in that, that, that what I call the canoe, the canoe of parking, we would keep it in that.
Up here, where the trees are planted.
Where those three trees are, we would, we would shift those trees into a more, into a ne- more narrow green strip there. And we, that's where it would go. But to avoid another conflict of crossing, that would be more of a, that might be a busier, where this is internalized still.
Right.
More like a through path.
Yep, okay. Alright, then, um.
I'm ready.
You're ready?
I am ready, but, uh, unless someone else has the motion, I, I would, uh, move that with respect to, uh, file S P two-three-oh-one-seven, uh, and apply for by the Rumpa Group LLC, that the, um, site plan approval be recommended to the, uh, Sciop Township Board of Trustees regarding fifty-nine-twenty Jackson Road, parcel H dash oh-eight-twenty-one dash four-twenty dash zero-zero-one, specifically the Bridgestone-Firestone Auto Care, uh, with the following recommendations. One, is it the applicant correct the plan set page numbers? Two, that the applicant provide mitigation trees having a minimum caliber eh, of two-point-five inches, um, as determined by a new site plan or prove that the trees, uh, were removed greater than five years ago. Three, as approved by Carlisle Wardman Associates. Three, that the township engineer review the utility connections and stormwater management system. Four, that the Planning Commission, uh, will allow or recommend, since Board of Trustees approve, a parking waiver to accommodate thirty total parking spaces on the Bridgestone-Firestone location. Fifth, that the Planning Commission, um, well, that, that, that the site plan include a sidewalk connection, uh, via the nor- to the north, to the existing sidewalk, as approved by Kyle R. Wardman Associates. Six, that the Planning Commission, uh, recommend that parking lot trees be permitted um, adjacent to the parking lot, rather than within the parking lot. Seven, that the, uh, applicant provide Bridgestone wall signs, details as noted. Eight, that the signs will require a separate sign, uh, permit prior to installation. And I believe I'm up to nine, that the applicant, um, is encouraged to use native plants and seedings, um, around the stormwater detention systems. Just a period, I didn't say in front of the building, I just said around the. Well, that would be my motion, and, and open to friendly amendments on stuff that I've forgotten to be.
Is there a problem with the number, cuz you said thirty spaces on the Firestone site, and some of those.
Not including the, I'm gonna think Culver.
Yes, that, that, I meant to say adjacent, thirty spaces adjacent, we'll say. Building, is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Henry, I meant to say that, but you helped me get better.
And I do have a question, you said S P twenty-three-oh-one-seven, and that's on Kyle R. Wardman's report. But in our agenda, it says twenty-three-oh-two-oh, I just wanna make sure we get the right number. We need like another correction to make to our agenda.
Then I could, the lead reference to that, talk about fifty-nine-twenty Jackson Road, uh, Firestone-Bridgestone, regarding the parking that I previously cited.
Yeah, yep, that's the safe way to do it, thank you.
Oh, O H M has twenty-three-oh-two-oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, the. One place that John read from says seventeen.
So it, it should be twenty-three-oh-two-oh, okay. Um, eh, are there, uh, any further discussion? Oh, yeah.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Hyde, thank you. Uh, further discussion on the motion? Alright, a roll call vote, please.
Hyde?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Rothney?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Culbertson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Walsh, yes.
Alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, um, next we have our bylaws, um, and the, the, um, bylaws, uh, technically, we need to distribute them at, at these seven days prior to acting on them, so, um, it just, some background, we had gone through and wanted to, we needed to change a few things to be consistent. Um, and, uh, the township attorney reviewed them and had a few other, um, um, suggestions, and the comment was that they're, they're kinda clunky bylaws. However, this takes care of the issues that, um, the bylaws were, um, not consistent with practice, not consistent with the Open Meetings Act, some other things, so this cleans them up from a procedural standpoint. It doesn't clean them up and make them clunky, but I wanted to at least clean them up and eh, so we can't act on them tonight, but it, it'd be good to, um, if people have anything in particular, we will definitely have to put them on our next agenda, um, but I wanted to get comments.
Uh, just a red, do you have a red line version?
Well, what I would also say is, I didn't have it in my, it wasn't in the packet when I pulled this down.
Oh.
I see it's in the agenda now, so.
So on page.
Yes, go ahead.
Page six, there's this red paragraph about, although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by previous speakers. Um, is that something that the lawyer has?
That was.
Someone else thought of putting in here?
It was in the original.
Oh, and it was accidentally taken out?
No, I think it's to highlight if we want to say that.
Okay, so someone's recommending that this be put in, put back in.
So we, one, we want a red marked copy. Okay.
Cuz that's not the only red thing, it's, yeah, that's how we're adding is.
No, we're not.
We can pass these tonight.
No.
I know, I know.
But anyway, okay, red mark copy, and I can also, um, just request that folks, if you have some questions or uh, you know, you can, uh, email those to me and I'll relay it to Mariah if you have some.
So putting, putting it on the website, answered the publication, or given to the trustee, uh, given to the commissioner.
Yes.
Now we have, shut our next meeting, that'll be two weeks.
It'll be two weeks.
So, with regard to the issue of clunkiness.
Yes.
Is, is, are we gonna get more, are we gonna get anti-clunky, um, revisions? To look at next time?
No.
Okay, okay, so clunky's gonna remain?
Clunky's gonna remain until we determine that we wanna do a complete rewrite of the bylaws.
Oh my gosh, okay, yeah.
And we're more than enough.
So I moved the table?
I'm not gonna oppose that, but with respect.
Yes.
Can you just like, what are the highlights, can you point them out, or do we just wait till we get the red line version?
Let's wait till we get the red line version, or highlighted versions, but they, the.
Look, at the last meeting, it was, it was. I can send that to you.
No.
Yeah, but it, basically it was, um, um, the appointments.
Right.
Being staggered.
Staggered.
Yep, and there were, was the, um, it, it, it had to do with the Open Meetings Act, with what, our instructions to folks around the Open Meetings Act. And, uh, I think tho- those were the big things, and then there was just cleaning up some of the, um.
Some language.
Language, yeah. So there were no like.
Major.
Major change.
And legals bettered them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so we'll ask for a red marked copy and, um, and though that copy has to be distributed.
I would, so I would second Commissioner Moore's motion, thank you.
For our next meeting, um, sure, with a red mark copy. Okay, is there support for that, you, you supported? Riser did, okay, uh, I don't think we need a roll call vote for that, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please note that Commissioner Yapple was not here for the vote, he stepped out. Okay. Um, then we'll just go on to our minutes. Reports. Um, oh yeah, reports and then minutes. So, anything from Carlisle Wardman?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay, anything from O H M?
We also have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, um, any questions on, um, trustee Riser's report that he handed out, and that will be uploaded into the minutes? He, it's, uh, he included, oh my gosh, um, the Board of Trustees, the Parks Preserve and Pathways and Land Preservation.
Thank you, Jen.
Yes. And, um.
I'll, you have a figure.
Okay, uh, and then our River Watershead Council?
We haven't had any meetings since then.
C D A? Okay, and.
C B A met last Thursday.
Yeah.
We had a variance on the hotel proposed on the east side of Z, north of Jackson Vine, uh, car wash. All they were asking for was a variance for a three-story building, if it was a two-story building, the building met the height requirements otherwise. Uh, the Z B A approved the variance on a three to two vote.
What do you mean?
So gave them a three-story?
So three-story within the height limit was allowable.
So I will say, the Goodrich Rezone, they're thinking of going to five and six stories, if it to be multifamily housing. So just, that's just maybe a glimpse into the future.
And that part of the dis- told Jen, so first the E B A I've been at where, when the motion was made, and I made it, I didn't know how the voting was gonna go. We talked about yes, we talked about no, and we talked about tabling to give the J-Rod Committee time to talk. But the applicant asked for a vote, and the thought was we're probably going to get to higher height limits. And since they were staying in the height limit, it was just a matter of three stories versus two. And, you know, you'll see then, the minutes if you want, and the whole discussion, what the facts. That was just like a summary.
Yeah, on that point, the, um, Goodrich Theater is a site condominium, is a condominium. It's not a P U D, so.
Yeah, it is a.
It is a P U D. We can amend the P U D to approve the stories.
Right, so, okay, I thought you were saying, heads up for the Z B A.
No, I'm just saying.
That's what I thought.
I'm just saying, if multifamily goes in there with some, with an affordable aspect, it could be six stories. If not, it could be five stories, we're gonna have to start figuring out all the public benefits that include, um, fire department, ladders, how, 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 you know, we gotta rescue people once we let them live that, oh, so that's just, I mean, just, I, I, I understand it's a horizon issue.
Just, just to be clear, the C B A previously had turned down the Fourth Party Hotel and kicked it back to the Planning Commission. So I mean, we had recognized the height limits previously.
And, and.
Yeah.
And it went pretty fast that time, that meeting was that very wrong.
Correct.
Right, that was fine.
Okay, um, anything on W two rag?
I, uh, submitted a written report. Questions?
That came, um, via email.
Email, yes. That, that meeting was about transportation, so Marie Gress was there from Wave to present on what's going on. Um, and, uh, Watts, Representative Antwan, I didn't get his last name. The big thing was, there's a, uh, uh, a feeling amongst the Western Washington communities that we're not paid attention to when it comes to these twenty-five-year plans on transportation, and the focus is on the east side of the county, Ann Arbor, Zalanti, so. And, um, I said something about it, and, um, uh, Mr. Colburn, the new, uh, city, uh, city manager for Chelsea said something about it, wanted to know when these public meetings, and why aren't we there? I was like, well, you know, and then it was pointed out to me that you were our representative, so, um, we're gonna need to kinda pull some transportation stuff together, and you're gonna need to be in there, because it sounds to me like there's a lot of, um, there's, there is talk and participation, it's just that we're not in there, and we need to be in there because decisions are being made, so, um.
Yeah, so we need to add Watts, sorry, to your list.
Okay.
That'd be fine, okay. Okay, uh, okay, um, then, yeah, so, uh, the Transportation Committee had their final meeting. They are gonna make a, a recommendation, and it includes, um, uh, renew and restore, um, uh, millage. So, uh, eh, basically what that means is, because of headly, when you have a millage, it actually decreases in value over time, where, um, this would restore it to its original, which was six-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars when levied, that's the estimate. And it, it's staying at that, um, point three-six-two-seven mil, um, is, is the proposal that's going to the B O T. And, uh, the other interesting thing, eh, the other recommendation is that, that there, that there's, um, a Transportation Committee be established, uh, within the township. The recommendation is that it would be, uh, reporting, um, to the Planning Commission. Now, whether or not the B O T does it that way or not, um, but the thought was, it could include some folks, you know, obviously, you know, Watts, Wave, the triple A T A, um, the, eh, the Mobility Group from the E S T F, et cetera. So whether or not they decide to do that, um, I thought it, it was relevant to kind of report that to the Planning Commission, and of course, then Commissioner Moore agreed to chair that committee. And it struck that from the. Yeah, um, so I, I think what came out of that was, one, it was, it's been a really good dialogue. One, it was, it's been a really good dialogue to having, having all those folks together and talking about issues. And, um, and there needs to be a, just not just education around the village, but, uh, education around. Yes, uh, you know, a.
Planning purposes.
Cohesive transportation thing. Um, then also, um, there is a grant that we're going to kind of track down, uh, that would. And Doug, you a- asked about what we knew about the grant. We don't know anything about the grant yet. It's a SEMCO grant. For, uh, multimodal transportation planning that would be Jackson corridor related, um. And I guess it, it's for a transportation planner to really study that area, um, hasn't been applied for, we haven't. Um, I, I haven't seen it actually, um, out on the SEMCO site yet, so anyway. Yeah, that's the purpose of that. Um. E S T F, go, I'm sorry, did you have something else, Doug? Okay, um, we are about ready to, to submit the. Community Energy Management Grant for a hundred thousand dollars, um. Uh, for replacing that, uh, it, it's a, making sure we have, um. You know, laid out a bunch of options for the B O T, for the replacement of the H V A C system. In the older part, it's three rooftop units, and our next meeting is, uh, next week. And J-Rod starts, um, the first meeting will be Thursday evening. And that is a, um, a public meeting, so people, if you're interested in, you can zoom in. Or ten. What is June, um, the Jackson Road overlay dispel, yeah. J-Rod.
J-Rod.
All right, and I talked too much. All right, minutes. Any other reports? Just sure I cut them off, all right?
Um, I would just say, uh, with regard to transportation in the Western. And did, we just got word, Wave did, this M dot is asking us to, um, submit a petition for a facility.
Woo-hoo.
Yeah, um, that just came through the pipe a couple of days ago, so, and they're being strongly encouraging us to do it, so. And they would pay for everything. There'd be no match required.
Wow.
M dot.
What's up?
There's, and it would be an F T A.
Building.
Like.
For the buses.
Like a bus stop?
No, no, a bus facility, where the, but right now, we park our buses, um. Somewhere in Chelsea, I won't bore you with the details, and we're about to get E V station, about eleven or twelve E V stations. And we're trying to figure out where we're going to put them in our offices or open on Jackson Road, so.
Yes.
Um, we're spread out, but so that's kind of new and exciting, but, you know.
Yes.
We'll see how that shakes out.
How much money they, they want to give you?
I don't know what the money is, I, sorry, I'll have to find out.
That'll be interesting, because I can't imagine it'll be cheap.
No, and, um, yeah, so that's been one of the, one of my goals as a board member on, with that board, is to talk about that. What kind of facility?
That's cool.
Cool.
All right.
Well, we're at the beginning stages, so we'll see how it goes.
All right, um, minutes. They got uploaded.
I couldn't.
Do we have problems?
Then you sent us an email.
And I did see them earlier, I read through.
Is that a? Motion to approve?
That would be a motion to approve, the minutes as presented.
Second, you're ready, okay. Can we do a discussion on the minutes? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved as submitted. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Their support?
I'll get mine. Good.
Commissioner Walsh.
We have another comment, number two?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we do.
We do according to our bylaws.
Yeah, we do, it's just.
And it's not on our agenda, okay. I withdraw my motion. Withdraw, we're, we're, we're pausing that motion.
I'll, I'll ask, uh, any of our two guests if they would like to raise their hands and speak.
John just unmuted me to make me talk. Thank you for having the second public talk.
Thank you.
We're tradable.
All right, all right, then, um, the motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Right.